Okay, we're ready? Okay, I'd now like to call the meeting of the planning commission to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in accordance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV, Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Throwbridge.
Present.
Vice Chair Truesdale.
Present.
Commissioner Buckley.
Present.
Commissioner Quinn.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Present.
Commissioner Going.
Present.
Commissioner Ellsworth.
Excuse absence, has an emergency in the family. Thank you. We have a quorum. "I call your attention to the information printed on the agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process if applicable. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate your adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting." Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the April 9th, 2009 Planning Commission meeting?
So moved.
And the joint Planning Commission City Council workshop of March 23rd?
Make a motion to approve both those minutes.
Thank you. Motion has been made, please cast your vote. Let's move on to the housekeeping items. Are there any items that the commissioners, staff, applicants, or members of the public would like to pull forward for action?
Mr. Chairman, we have a few items. Item 17, 18, 19, and 20, the applicant requests those items be held in abeyance as the items have been revised and need to be re-noticed. Item number 30 has been requested by the applicant to hold that in abeyance in order to allow the applicant time to submit an application, an elevation, and pay for the fees.
Thank you. Any other items to be addressed? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and the items that you're speaking about.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. My name is Tony Sless, address is 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, items number 33 through 37, and we wish that to be obeyed for two weeks.
And?
Or, I'm sorry, until June 11th, I'm sorry.
That'd be essentially a 30-day period.
Correct.
What is the purpose of the?
Just in order to continue work with our client and revise some plans and move.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, this is an area that is, there's a purchase of a lot that's involved in this particular parcel that's now finalizing the purchase.
Right.
And when this property closes escrow, then the application can come forward a little cleaner.
That's definitely our intention, so that's why we're asking for the 30 days.
If I may ask a question?
Please.
If there's an additional APN, the whole project has to start over again because we have to re-notice.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would that be in abeyance of item 38 as well, the vacation?
No, just 33 through 37.
Does anyone wish to speak on any of these items, sir?
I'd like to speak on 33 through 37. My name is Frank Comperoni, I live at 4614 Balsam Street. These applications before you today are applications for work that's already been done. They're referring on Balsam Street as two residences, it's been operated at an office for two years now, and they've been reported to code time and time and time again. He's got three properties, the one on Redcoats, the one on Balsam, and one on Rainbow at 4485, that are complete, they're just in violation of code constantly. They're driving major trucks down our streets, and it just continues and continues. He's steamrolling us. And he's been up here before, and if you check, I don't know if you guys get it from code enforcement, I think he has an open case on Balsam, should have one on Redcoats and Rainbow.
Yes, I think.
You know, and we drive all the way down here, continue to do this, in fact, my wife dropped me off, I'm gonna have to wait two hours for her, and they come in with this abatement, I mean, you know, and the reason, he also was involved in another one on Balsam with Scott Grayson, and he got out of that because he couldn't get his escrow closed. This man has wrecked our neighborhood.
Is your home the property right on the corner there?
Yes, I'm on the corner.
It's a beautiful home, and I understand your sensitivity to.
Yeah, it's, these major trucks, almost every night there are three major trucks parked on Balsam, one is a front loader, another one's a double pot asphalt, and this is all over. And I know Commissioner Steinman has went out there because I've spoken to him, and his comment was, this man thinks he can get away with anything.
Well.
And that's what he's doing.
I will take your comments and put them on the record, and when the item comes forward again, hopefully you won't have to come down, but you're certainly welcome to, but your records are on the, on the, on the record, and we understand the situation out there, and hopefully within the next 30 days, they can do what they need to do to.
Well, we have a bunch of tractors in front of my house, you could just move stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next?
My name is Roger Kell, I live at 4597 North Balsam, right on that same street. I'd like to know what type of stores he's requesting, is it for heavy-duty trailers, tractors, semi-trucks, and the like used for his paving company? This is the type of storage is what we have been reporting to code enforcement for the past two years. Balsam is a narrow residential street, not constructed for heavy-duty traffic. Aston Company is trying to make an industrial area out of a residential area, please help and consider us. I have been on that property 33 years. Thank you.
Thank you for your input, sir, and we'll keep your record, your comments on the record also, so that you don't have to come down again. And I think, I appreciate the comments, and hopefully the applicant can take them to heart and take them into consideration during the next 30 days while they prepare their application. So having, having any other individuals wish to speak on the matter, sir? No? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask if there's any way possible, Mr. Sless, that when this comes forward the next time, for some reason, if there's a delay, that perhaps you can notify the public and those most affected prior to the meeting, so they don't come down here unnecessarily?
Yes, absolutely, and I was asking the gentleman afterwards if I could get his contact information.
Perhaps you can get their numbers or something, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. No other persons wishing to be heard on these items or be action taken on, so a motion on these housekeeping items?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, we have one additional applicant that wishes to speak on said item.
Where'd they go? He sat down on us.
Kenneth Fowler, 1950 East Warm Springs, Las Vegas. We'd like to request an abeyance for items 27, 28, and 29 until the May 28 meeting.
And your purpose?
We had some issues come up today with the client that we'd like to have a couple of weeks to prepare for those prior to having a public hearing.
Thank you. About three more requests for abeyance, or we can just go home, please? Okay, so a motion is ordered now to address the housekeeping items?
Mr. Chairman, move that these items are brought forward and approved as requested by staff.
And just to clarify, I believe I missed, on the items I read in, the requests for 17, 18, and 19, and 20 were to obey those items till the June 11 Planning Commission meeting, and item number 30 was to hold that item till the May 28 meeting.
Thank you. Okay, motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman, I am gonna vote on this, but there are a couple of these items that maybe need to abstain when they do come back before us.
Thank you. I don't think you need to abstain from a motion to approve the agenda. Okay, motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries. Okay, we can now move to the one motion, one vote section of the agenda, as there are no consent items. The following items are items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public, and public hearing items. All public hearings and non-public hearings will be open at one time. Any person representing an applicant, an application, or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. We have items.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request to pull item 7 as well, please.
Okay. Item number 6 is a vacation, 33475. The applicant is the city of Las Vegas, the owner is Wine Garden Nosta, Inc., to vacate a 100-foot-wide drainage easement at the southeast corner of Decatur Boulevard and Charleston Boulevard, Ward 1. Item number 8 would be RQR 33292. The applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor, LLC, owner is PK1 Rainbow Promenade, LLC. Required review of a previously approved variance which allowed a 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign located within 200 feet of a residential zone at 2021 North Rainbow Boulevard. I will be abstaining on that item, by the way, because I have an ongoing relationship with Lamar due to an advertising, or a political campaign. Item number 9 is RQR 33733. The applicant is CBS Outdoor, the owner is Ali Land, LLC. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 1201 South Jones Boulevard. Item number 10 is RQR 33734. The applicant is Lamar Central Outdoor, LLC, the owner is Sichuan Corp. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a 50-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 3101 West Sahara Avenue. Again, I'll be abstaining from that one because of an ongoing relationship with Lamar advertising and relationship to a political campaign. Item number 11 is RQR 33882. The applicant owner is Chitac Development. It's required review of a previously approved special use permit for a 55-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 2236 Paradise Road. Item number 12 is RQR 33955. The applicant is Regan National Advertising of Nevada, LP, the owner is J.G. Sahara, LLC. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise sign at 1,000 East Sahara Avenue. Item 14 is special use permit 34016. The applicant is Clear Wireless, Inc., LXT4 LLC. It's request for a special use permit for proposed 80-foot-tall wireless communication facility stealth-designed mono palm approximately 560 feet north of Meadows Lane and approximately 350 feet east of Decatur Boulevard. Item number 14 is VAC 33863. The applicant owner is Canyon Ridge Christian Church to vacate the Bronx Street alignment south of La Madre Way on the southwest corner of La Madre Way and Bronco Street. Public hearing is now declared open. Anyone wishing to speak on any of these items, please approach the microphone, give your name for the record, and sign the sheets that are there available so that.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Margo, are they keeping these signs clean?
They wouldn't be on 1+1 if they weren't.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on any of these items? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioner for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna abstain on my item 11 because it's in a shopping center they have an interest in, and I'd like to pull item 13 just for discussion.
And item number 13 is pulled. Thank you. So a motion's been made with the understanding of the abstentions by Vice Chair Truesdale and those by myself. Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
Did he make a motion?
I don't think he made a motion. Who needs to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Make a motion to approve the one motion, one vote items, as read, as read in by the record, and we're pulling items 7 and 13.
Correct. Motion's made, please cast your vote. Those items carry as approved.
All matters go forward to council on June 7.
Item number 7 is EOT 33957. The applicant is Mammoth Underground, LLC, the owner is Longley Construction Company, Inc., extension of time for an approved variance to allow a 10-foot-high perimeter fence where eight feet is the maximum height allowed at 421 and 507 West Bonanza. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has completed the engineering design of the proposed extension of this wall and is requesting the extension of time in order to facilitate the permitting, construction, and installation of it. Staff has no issue and recommends approval.
Thank you. Now declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on this item, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record and sign in. Is the applicant here?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Didn't we hear this once before?
If I may.
I thought that.
This has already been heard and approved. What they're requesting right now is just an extension of time to complete the project.
Oh, I see. Is the applicant here?
Sir, you'd like to approach the microphone, I think there's gonna be a question.
Mike Galker, 421 West Bonanza.
Thank you. Let me declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion.
My only comment is, I rode by there, and while I understand why you're holding it for, for an extension of time, my concern was the debris that's been collected up there, bags and stuff like that, so I guess if you could go back to the Ahearn folks and tell them to clean that up a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for a motion on this particular item.
Seeing none, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval of item 7, EOT 33957, subject to all staff's recommendations and condition.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
That's final action unless appealed within 10 days.
Now we move to item number 13, special use permit 34016. The applicant is Clear Wireless, Inc., Clear Wireless, LLC, the owner is LXT4 LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed 80-foot-tall wireless communication facility stealth-designed mono palm approximately 560 feet north of Meadows Lane and approximately 530 feet east of Decatur Boulevard. Staff report, please.
The proposed mono palm cell tower complies with the residential adjacency requirements and all other applicable Title 19 requirements. Staff finds that they used to be compatible and harmonious with the surrounding development and recommends approval.
Thank you. Now I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and sign in, please, for the applicant we have.
Good evening, Shane Hennessy York, 7030 Smoke Ranch Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Clear Wire. This is a proposed 80-foot wireless communication facility designed as a stealth facility. This is a palm tree. It is, it will be, the closest frontage will actually be the 95 interchange. It is essentially behind the old, on the north side of the old Mervyn's, the Mervyn's Center, as it was mentioned, 524 feet from Meadows Lane.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to the planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna raise a question, because these 80-foot palm tree here is not stealth, it's an aberration. I mean, this is a shopping center that has less than exciting architecture over the years, now it's a closed Mervyn's next to it. It's gone through a lot of, you know, half the property's used as adjacent to it, it's an auto storage lot, and it, this, a palm tree is going to not be stealth. And I just would like to see us kind of revisit what stealth means, because 80-foot-high palm trees, they don't exist here except in the communication world. And for all the efforts that the planning commission and staff and this community's done to try and make our city more attractive, and we really tried to correct some problems with these cell towers, now it's proved to be worse. I mean, you don't see an antenna, you just see palm trees sitting, and pine trees with communications facilities hanging out of them, so I just would like staff and this commission to look at these in the future. That's why I won't support this particular location.
I tend to agree with you. I think an 80-foot-tall pole with what looks like an artificial Christmas tree sitting on it is, is out of place. It doesn't fool me, I know what it is, and I wonder if, in this particular application, you're out there all by yourself, if a self-contained pole that looks more like a light pole or a flagpole would accommodate the mechanisms that are necessary to function as an antenna. Would you happen to know if at this site, that design would, would work?
We, the problem with that design is we open a whole different can of worms when it comes to the development code, because the slimline light pole or, you know, concealed poles aren't, aren't considered stealth based upon the development code. What's, what's nice about this kind of facility is although Clear Wire is at the top of this facility, it is available for future colocations at the 70-foot level, at the 60-foot level, so you'll have more than one carrier coming forward for, for colocation on this, on this kind of facility. And you're right, an 80-foot pole, you know, it's, it's not exactly beautiful, but it, we have a, we have a need based upon RF engineer and the service that we'd like to provide in that area, and with an 80-foot height, we'll be able to provide that service.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Just to correct, light poles and flagpoles are stealth by this code. In this case, a light pole would not work because 80 feet is too high for a light feature.
I realize, I'm just.
But the flagpole would be considered stealth.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to echo your sentiments as well. I'm, I'm always perplexed that the industry, that we don't find a more innovative approach to this. We have hundreds of thousands of transmission lines all throughout the valley. I think every goalpost and, and every high school and, and the lights in the stadiums, they all should perhaps be looked at for possible cell tower locations rather than erecting new ones, and I would agree, the, the Christmas tree approach is certainly out of place. I've seen them in other communities where they're designed differently and they actually look fairly attractive, and why we can't do that is a mystery.
In, in response to your, your question regarding the school district, a few years ago, the, the school district actually opened bidding for the installation of communication facilities. It was only on administrative buildings, administrative parcels and high schools. Those are the only, those are the only parcels that the, the school district would open up for bidding. They didn't want middle schools, they didn't want elementary schools. And at that time, the, the process for bidding, and I'm kind of just going off the top of my head, I don't remember, again, it was a few years ago, but in order to meet the expectations, we couldn't submit a bid unless we were doing five sites or more per carrier. So each carrier had to find at least five sites to go on for a school, and at that time, we, we, none of us could meet it. Verizon was at the meeting, I was representing Singular at the time, now AT&amp;T, T-Mobile was looking at it, you know, we, we all tried to look at it, and at that point in time, we couldn't find, we couldn't meet all the conditions of, of the bidding process, and the bid was only open for 60 days at the time.
I would bet if some of these got denied, you'd find some innovative approaches to cellphone construction.
We've, you know, and this is, this is actually a similar conversation that we've had over at the county, with the county planning commission also, because they would really like to see some of, some of these go on, on school facilities. You know, we all know the budget crunch we're in, and that would be, if, if there was an option, I, I know that there's a high school not far from here, but in this instance, you know, we don't have the opportunity to go on the, the school district parcels.
Yeah, we'd be directly north, north of the freeway there, almost in the same RF pattern that you'd be there. There's, I think, six high-rise light standards that already exist on the western high school field.
Mm-hmm.
And I understand the school district, you may have their five, you know, wanting people to bid for five, or not restrict us down, but we're in a state, a city, and a county, I mean, some of our finest legislators are sitting up in Carson City.
Trying to find money.
Trying to scratch every dollar they can out of us.
Yeah.
I'd love to see some of that, you know, the cellular revenue help offset that. I mean, how do we, how do we kind of get a, a aggressive discussion with the schools if it takes the city, makes no sense just to build, build these aberrations. I mean, you want, private property owners want their revenues, and that's great, but not at the expense of a palm tree that makes no sense, when we have schools that could utilize it. I mean, there are alternatives, and it just seems that we, we aren't trying to get there.
Chairman?
Please.
I want to thank you, Commissioner Truesdale, for pulling this off of the one motion, one vote. This is where I live, shop, and do my daily business, and what concerns me is the fact that that whole area is, is, we've lost bonds, now we've lost, we've lost Mervyn's and bonds, and it's, we're slowly losing businesses. And if I was a business owner, I'd be very disenchanted to want to join that shopping center if the first thing I saw was your stealth palm thing. So I want to thank you, Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Truesdale, for bringing it to my attention. Your expertise always guides me in the right direction, and I'm going to agree with you tonight and follow your recommendation for denial. Thank you, sir.
Okay, let me ask one question. When was the, the meeting with the school district where they broached the subject of a minimum of five sites and all that?
It would have been in excess of three years.
I think we're due for a revisit to that, so.
Yeah.
I think we're ready for a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion to deny this application.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days.
I think we have a significantly different school board there and a different economic climate. I think you might find a more favorable way to address the situation.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make the remark that I was, you know, in light of just really the palm tree discussion, as I was driving down, headed south on Rancho, it was, it was, I think, a little bit north of the airport, and I think on one side there is a stealth palm, and then the other side of the street, there's just a pole with the, whatever the things are, close into the pole, and it looked way better than the palm tree. I mean, it was just, and all it was, was a pole. It wasn't a flagpole or anything, it was just a very slim.
Slimline configuration.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we try, we went through a lot of effort to try and rectify some of the visual impact, and we might have went too far the other way. It's nothing against the cellular industry, it's just, here's what it is.
And, and the other thing, if I may, Mr. Chairman, not to belabor this, but I think we have an item.
I have a second item, too, tonight.
No, we have an item.
I'll be back.
Later on the agenda where there's a similar issue, but there was a discussion recently, and for whatever reason, it's my understanding, it won't go forward, but of allowing the, the cellular arrays on, on billboards. It appears to me that if we already have the billboard, you know, what would an array be? I mean, it wouldn't be a significant visual blight in addition to what's already there. You already have the pole in the ground and obviously the, you know, the lease in, in place, and I just think there are options, and I think we need to explore them.
We've, in, in some cases, you know, we will pursue that. We've, we've looked at, if I can still speak freely.
Oh, yeah.
We can, we've, we've looked at doing that, I've, we've done some of those. I actually, I was able to get an approval for antennas on a billboard out in the Southern Highlands area, right on the 15, on the south side, on the south end of town. It's not something that we're afraid to do, but if, if it's already built, the additional weight loading of, of adding the antennas and the configuration, the, the cost is sometimes so cumbersome that sometimes either the wireless carrier or the billboard owner doesn't want to modify their site, and then also at the same time, we get into a lot of, you know, pre-existing non-conforming towers that would have to change and, and billboards, and sometimes they just don't want to mess with those approvals.
Thank you. Don't go too far. Item number 15. Item number fifteen, variance thirty-three, eight forty-eight. The applicant is Clearwater U.S. LLC. The owner is Nellis WFT LLC. Twelve twenty-six parking spaces, where twenty-seven are required, at eleven fifteen Newark Nellis Boulevard. Its companion item is number sixteen, special use permit thirty-three, two fifty-three. Is for proposed seventy-foot-tall wireless communication facility, non-stealth design, slimline monopole. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, our law firm represents Clearwire U.S. LLC, so I'm going to abstain on these two items.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abance in order to allow the applicant time to investigate if the cell tower could be located within the existing tavern sign at this location. Currently, the proposed application is to locate the tower and related equipment within the parking lot of the tavern. This would eliminate one parking space. If the parking variance is denied, the owner could combine the two parking lots into one, combining those two lots into one legal lot, and as such, the parking variance would not be needed. Staff finds the variance is self-imposed and is therefore recommending denial of both applications.
And in regards to, oh, both, you just lump them together. Okay, anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Please approach the microphone and give your name for the record.
Shane Hennessy York, seventy-thirty Smoke Ranch Road.
I thought you looked familiar.
Been here a couple of times. Here on behalf of the applicant, Clearwire LLC. This is an application that we discussed thirty days ago. It is on the Big Dogs Tavern parcel. There were two requests proposed by this commission. One was to see if we could locate the antennas on the Big Dogs signage. The answer was no from the property owner. He did not want to have the antennas on the sign. The second, the second option actually at that meeting was that the commission were asked if it was possible to build this to look like a palm tree or like another tree. At that time, and after speaking with the client, Clearwire, they would like to pursue the slimline configuration with all antennas and microwave dish inside of the pole, so it would just be a standalone pole. Originally, our plans showed lights at forty feet to match the existing lights of the parking lot. And as a condition, if approved, staff was asking that we take those lights off of the pole. And I'd be happy to remove those.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on any of these items? Either of these items?
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. My thinking is if the owner doesn't want to cooperate, we're going to just shoot him down. Deny the variance.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on either of these items? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to the variance, I understand the issue, but we're talking one space on a property that I've been to, and it hasn't proved to be parking deficient. So if there are no comments, I would make a motion to support the variance for the parking.
Now, with a discussion, motion's been made on regards to item number fifteen. Please cast your vote. Motion's made, please cast it. Compost. Motion carries. Item number sixteen.
As much as we beat the cell tower issue up, I think the slimline pole is more in keeping. I'd like to see these at the appropriate height, but I understand the structural issues with the sign, and it's at seventy feet. Is it possible this goes to sixty feet? I mean, it's going to be.
If you'd like to make a motion to approve it at sixty feet, I could, we could make that work.
Mr. Chairman, I'm through you. My thought is the closeness to the residential. If you were to lower it a little bit, it might have much less of an impact. So I think I would be inclined to support it at a lesser height as well.
And Mr. Chairman, if there are no other comments, I'd make a motion to support this application at sixty feet.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes.
That would be an additional condition, that the approval is for a maximum height of sixty feet.
Thank you. Post. Motion carries.
And that goes forward to counsel on June seventeenth.
Thank you. Connect.
We now move to item number twenty-one, which is a variance thirty-three, seven sixty-two. The applicant owner is Olga, oh boy, Sergey Vyshevskaya, to allow a proposed twelve-foot-high wall in the front yard setback area where five feet is the maximum allowed, and the side yard where eight feet is the maximum allowed at sixteen forty South Tenaya Way. Staff report, please, and I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abance to allow the applicant time to redesign the project to provide some landscaping within the front setback area. The applicant has revised the plans to provide a six-foot landscape area with five trees along Tenaya. Staff still finds that the request to be self-imposed hardship and therefore is recommending denial. Staff, if approved, conditions would like to recommend an additional condition to indicate conformance to the site plan date stat five-one-oh-nine.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wishing to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record, if you would, for the applicant.
Cassidius Shachavichus, Design Cell Architects, ten seven 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 West Wayne Avenue. I'd like to comment about self-imposed hardship, you know, we discussed already last time, about entrance to existing home located on the, on this, on the currently what is considered side yard of the property. And this way, we, there is no particularly good use for the front yard except for a garden area that we propose at this point. I would just like to also note that it's not twelve-foot variance wall we're requesting. It's, we're requesting eight-foot wall.
Thank you.
And we have taken all the considerations of the last planning commission meeting of adding additional landscape in front of the wall and moving the wall back. What we proposed to move the wall back six feet and plant trees and additional plant at the corner of the street. And in addition to that, the client, the owner went and contacted most of the, most of the neighbors and people who has, who have sent cards to oppose the project when it was noted, when it was considered to be twelve-foot-high wall with a new proposed design. And everybody who we were able to contact, they changed their, and we have the written signatures from them.
Thank you. If you would give that to the city clerks, so they have that as part of the.
Yes, we also have, yes, I do have that. We also already sent that to the staff.
Thank you.
They're already on the record. And actually, just today, there are two more came in, which we'll give to the staff as well. Approval or approval letters of the new design. So essentially, what, as a trend that we saw, pretty much everybody that we have talked to, old neighbors, they were in support of the project, and they had no issues with the eight-foot wall as designed. Resessed six feet back into the property with additional landscape in front of it. So would like to request, you know, to request approval of the project because there is no possibility for us to use as a front yard uses with the parking and the driveway. And if we don't have a solid wall, there is going to be, you know, the house would have, would not have enough privacy or security to the side yard.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, we declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to planning commissioners for discussion.
I want to thank you for going back to the drawing board and putting in the landscape and moving the wall. And I sat in front of your property a few days ago, and to the west of you, you can see a beautiful wall with landscape in front. To the north of you is a wall as well. And I believe that this is going to make the neighborhood more aesthetically pleasing by you putting this in place if you follow all of staff's recommendations and you follow through with all the landscape that you promised. So if that's in fact, then you'll see my support.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, I'm assuming, is this the owner of Olga?
Yeah, I'm Olga.
Just husband. My name is Sergey Vyshevskaya.
We have in our backup the letter that you generated for your neighbors. And I'm assuming that through the, through your architectural firm, you reached out to the neighbors, et cetera. I think it very clearly states your purpose and what you intend to do. And I see where you asked for the support of your neighbors, and I think that's a really good thing. I would agree with my colleague over here, Commissioner Quinn. I think that's the key to much of this. I spoke with a couple of designers. A friend of mine, Daryl Parker, spoke very highly of it. And I went back and I looked at the design, and I was alarmed by the original application that says it's a twelve-foot wall. And my assumption from the original application was that the wall would be twelve feet high and that it would create a canyon effect and stand out in the neighborhood and kind of look like a sore thumb. The renderings that this, is it Design Cell? Is that the name of the firm? The renderings that you provided, where there's a setback and you've got landscaping, and then you've got, I think it's an eight-foot decorative wall, is incredibly attractive. And I see gentlemen in the room here, Mr. Miles, who has a couple of properties near me. And that's where I first saw that idea used, where you go into the property line and you can create some landscape, a landscape barrier that kind of deters the vagrancy or graffiti. It provides a green effect, and then the privacy, you're able to achieve the wall and the security that you want. And yet, it doesn't have a negative impact on the neighbors. So I very much like that idea, and I would hope that as applications move forward in the city, where that's something that we could consider, where there is a bit of a buffer with landscaping and then the wall, rather than the wall all the way up to the property line. So I applaud the design, I applaud the architecture, and you're reaching out to the neighbors as well. This will absolutely see my support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no one else wish to speak, I think we're ready for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of a variance three-three-seven six-two, number twenty-one, on the agenda with all the new renderings as turned in and as follows. I'd like to make the motion for approval.
If I may, that condition would read, if that's agreeable, that this approval is for the eight-foot maximum-high wall is pursuant to the site plan dated, it's five-one-oh-nine.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post. Motion carries.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to items number twenty-two and companion items twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Twenty-two is zoning thirty-two, eight oh four. The applicant is the city of Las Vegas. The owner is the Las Vegas Rescue Mission, Inc., from C two general commercial to M industrial at forty-eight hundred, or four hundred and eighty, rather, West Bonanza. Item twenty-three is variance thirty-two, four sixty-eight, is to allow fifty-one parking spaces where seventy-two parking spaces are required for an additional sixty-five beds within an existing rescue mission. Item number twenty-four, the special use permit thirty-four, oh twelve, is a major modification to an approved special use permit for the expansion of an existing rescue mission. And item number twenty-five, the site development review thirty-two, four sixty-seven, which is a major amendment to an approved site development plan review for a parking lot reconfiguration and the conversion of an existing nine thousand five hundred and forty, or eighty-four square foot dining facility into a sleeping facility for a total of two hundred and twenty beds in an existing rescue mission. Staff report, please.
The site currently contains a rescue mission with fifty-one parking spaces and a split zoning of C two and M zoning. The applicant is converting a dining area into sleeping quarters, and also, four parking spaces are being converted into a loading zone. The amendment to the zoning will bring it into conformance with the general plan and eliminate the split zoning, and staff recommends approval. The sleeping quarters and loss of parking for the loading zone have resulted in a need for parking variance, an amendment to the approved SUP and the SDR. The site is severely parking impaired, so that even if the loading zone was not approved, there would still be a need for a variance for seventeen spaces as part of this request. Staff cannot support the request that it has, the parking variance is a self-imposed hardship and therefore is recommending denial of the variance, the special use permit in the site plan review. Please note, there have been, there was one additional protest received after publication.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and turn the matter over to, or sorry, declare it open and ask that anyone in attendance, please approach the microphone and give their name and record, name for the record, please.
My name is George Rogers, architect, six-three-two-five South Jones. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Las Vegas Rescue Mission. And with me in the audience is the director of the rescue mission tonight, in case you have any questions appropriate for him. What I might do is describe some of what's gone on the last two years on the property. Two years ago, I believe, this commission and the city council approved a new dining hall to be constructed on the west side of the property, and I'll point to it right here. It's in the final stages of construction right now. And with it, adjacent to it on the east side, was a lot of new parking appropriate for it in conformance with the ordinance. There were some parking spaces shown adjacent to the existing storage building, and I'll point to that here, and here, adjacent to the existing thrift shop that perhaps maybe shouldn't have been shown a couple of years ago in that site plan. And so this really cleans that up so that loading and offloading can occur without displacing any parking spaces. Aside from that, the real application for additional beds occurs in what is the old dining facility that's not been abandoned yet. And I'll point to that, it's hatched right here. Right now, that building is, half of that building on the ground level is a dining facility and kitchen, the existing dining facility and kitchen. And half of that building is dormitory for homeless men. So this application would seek to make the other half of that building additional beds for homeless men. Now, the parking variance comes in, in this case. We currently don't use thirty spaces on the property. You can imagine, most of the, most of the men that come to this facility daily for meals or for sleeping, don't drive vehicles, they walk generally. And so tying the parking, the ordinance ties parking into beds, which seems incongruent. But we've used less than thirty spaces on-site for staff and volunteers in the past, and we don't expect to even use the fifty-one that we're asking for in the variance. But it's a twenty-nine percent variance, and really, that's the, that's the extent of the justification. We don't use the parking as it is. And here tonight, to justify in other terms the parking, we have a traffic consultant. We did submit that traffic engineer's plan, I'm sorry, letter with our application, but he's here to give testimony tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Robert Jose, twenty-seven twenty-seven South Rainbow Boulevard. I work for VTN, and we conducted a traffic evaluation of the existing facility and an analysis of the proposed expansion. We went out and observed parking utilization at various times throughout a day and found out that at maximum, twenty-nine vehicles were parked on-site. There is, again, I think there's fifty, fifty-one stalls available, so they don't currently utilize their full parking stalls. We then correlated the number of parking stalls available and the number of parking utilized to the number of beds that the facility currently provides and extrapolated that out for the expanded, for the additional beds. And under that, under that analysis. And under that, under that analysis, it projected that there would be 41 parking spaces needed to handle the expanded site. So based on that, plus the fact that, we concur that typically, the people utilizing the facility for, for the dormitory purposes do not drive vehicles. The parking, the parking needs are from staff and volunteers. So from that, we found that the proposed number of parking spaces would be adequate for the expanded site.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, may I ask a question?
Let's get through the public hearing. It'll just be one second, I'm sure. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on this matter? Sir, would you?
May I make two more comments?
Well, okay. Please, I'm sorry, Mr. Farley.
Just be a second. One important comment is, as we searched for parking requirements for homeless shelters of this nature in national standards, the ITE, an organization which publishes parking requirements generally for most business and residential uses, had no criteria for a facility of this nature. So it's no wonder that the ordinance that ties parking to beds might, might not be very accurate. Even the national standards are not very accurate in that regard. And the last thing is this, of what we're asking for on the facility is not changing any building that exists there today, except for the addition of an exterior stair that can't be seen from the street. All the buildings are existing and remain so. So there's no additional square footage being added to this property as a result. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Thank you. Todd Farley, 240 North 19th Street. First of all, I'd like to comment, I'd like to say that these people do a wonderful job. And this looks a lot better than that truck storage yard that they had there. But I have two things out of curiosity. Is that, I guess it's Wilson Avenue. Is that going to continue as a street? Because it looks like the freeway is tearing that up. And if that is going to be vacated, aren't they going to gain some ground on this? When a street is abandoned, doesn't that go back, revert back to the, to the, to the property?
Okay. Have a response, please.
If I may, Commissioner? Lucian Pyatt, Public Works. The current design for Wilson Street is to reconnect onto D Street, I believe, so...
It doesn't exist anymore.
It will exist. It's a reconnection.
It's a hill.
Well, that's, no, F Street is a hill that, that they closed. But D Street should wrap, it should wrap around and tie into D Street.
Okay, I'll believe that when I see it. The second thing is, is I, it's, it's got it down as industrial zoning. And to me, it seems like if people are going to be living there, it should be a different zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Mike Gauker, 421 West Bonanza. I live, I'm across the street with a business, across the street with a fence. But my concern is 25, that, and I spoke to the director over there, I'm not opposed to it, but is there any way that we can put someone on that? My major concern is that their people, once they close the gates after dinner, they use my property and their exterior property for a restroom. And we've got major concerns, the amount of people that are doing that. And I'd like, I don't know if we can do anything to get them to work with us to try and solve that in some way.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on the, on this item? Seeing now that the public hearing closed, and I believe that Mr. Evans has a question. And I would follow up on the restroom issue, perhaps the porta potty that can be serviced on a regular basis with access to it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure I understand this. All these applications, essentially, your goal is to have 222 beds where 157 currently exist, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're going to be changing and eliminating or minimizing some of the existing dining room to accommodate that space for beds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So if all this were, regardless of what happens, you're still going to have 157 beds?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So basically, this just adds beds. But you're not increasing the footprint or anything of that nature?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the other issue, and I guess, in terms of the parking, my thought is that I do understand it's the code. But I would suspect that if most homeless people had a car, they probably would be sleeping in it and not in the shelter. So I would agree with your concept that, or your belief that the parking requirement may be a little excessive. But beyond that, I, I do understand the sensitivity of this. And the area certainly has challenges. I don't know that there's any good answer. But I just wanted to be clear that this application simply increases the number of beds and eliminates or minimizes some of the area from the dining room, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, would anyone care to take on the question of the, the need for an after-hours restroom in the area?
Ken Heeder. I'm the executive director of the mission. I live at 9599 West Charleston Boulevard. And presently, our practice is that we have two porta potties on the inside of the property. And at mealtime, when the folks come in to eat, they're allowed to use the restrooms. They're allowed to use them when they're getting ready to leave. And then that's the extent of the availability from our facility at the moment. I did share with Mike, we did talk this evening from Mammoth, that we certainly would look at, are there other things that we could do to help alleviate some of that? Not sure that's going to be a complete solution. But we're also part of the Quarter of Hope Committee. And I intend to also talk with those folks there about what other options and possible solutions do we have. As we're talking about the homeless problem and the camping and, and the bathroom issues as well, on a broader scale throughout the city.
How many people do you feed there a day as compared to those that are residents or stay overnight?
In the evening, we will serve anywhere from 300 to 500 meals.
100 to 300 are put back out on the other side of the gate every evening?
Depending on how, how much room we have in our emergency overnight, once we fill those, and that's all that we have room for.
I understand the limitations, so it's, seems to be a significant problem then. Okay, anyone else have any?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Well, I know this is a sensitive issue. I just saw the recent article in the paper, and I probably assume everybody else has about the Quarter of Hope where Councilman Barlow and Councilman Wolfson visited the area. It's a sensitive issue. And I drive by it every day, just as early as yesterday morning at 7:00. I was coming northbound down Main Street, and I just crossed Washington, and the traffic was backed up. And I was wondering why. Well, it was, it was, it was, both lanes were blocked with a Public Works truck with gentlemen out using shovels to shovel homeless folks' leftovers from the night before. Behind that was a water truck that was spraying the water. And behind that was a city fire truck with the lights blaring. And it has become a little blighted in the area. You know, and I understand they're going to take $2.1 million and throw it at the problem and talk about putting lockers along the streets and things like that. But is that really going to solve the problem? I know this is not on your corner, but when I look at this ward, the ward I represent, we've got to ask ourselves, what are we creating? Pretty soon, that, that corridor hope is going to come all the way up south to Maine and Bonanza, and then it's going to wrap west to your place at Bonanza and D. And, and so what have we created inside of Ward 5? You know, and I look at it from a planning perspective, and, and if I ask my other commissioners, they would probably give me the old spiel that we've heard from a lot of folks is the NIMBY approach. So you feed 300 to 500 folks a day in there. But everything's concentrated right in this area. And, and I don't see any discussion about putting a, or I don't hear anything about saying, let's, let's put a shelter in Wards 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. So, and if I pose that out, I know what I'm going to get. I'm going to get the NIMBY from, from everybody else, not in our ward. But when you look at Ward 5, and you look at these streets, Maine and Owens, I mean, we have literally 400 to 500 people that sleep in tents along the street. In the mornings, it's now 95 to 100 degrees. You can smell the stench at your facility, once you close your gates, like the gentleman said. Where do folks have a choice to go? I mean, right now, homeless folks are sleeping in the construction zones. And, and when the crews get out in the morning, they have to shuffle people out so they can do their job. Also, we have a major freeway coming through. What's that going to create? It's going to create another tent city that's going to be perched right up under the freeway. And, and I just don't understand why it's all being concentrated in one area, but this is a city and a county-wide problem. And so we ask ourselves, well, what do we do? My answer is, we spread it out. Because I can go as far west as Hualapai and Charleston, and I see homeless folks there. I can go as far south out in the county, I see them there, but I don't see the facilities. So it seems like the thought is, disperse from this area during the day and do whatever you do, but bring it all back here into this little corridor, which is called the Corridor Hope, at night. But there's not enough facilities. And during my 16 years on the board, when I, when I voted to approve Shade Tree Shelter, Salvation Army, back then, those, at that time, they had a meaningful use. But with economic situations and people falling and, and, you know, whatever their problem is, I don't know why, what we're creating by keep expanding these areas where it's already overpopulated. The bubble's going to burst at some point. A lot of these neighborhoods that abut this have to deal with homeless folks walking through their neighborhood. I hear it every day. On the protest letter that we have in here, a lady says, "Our neighborhoods are already overburdened." We have 95 churches in a, in a five-mile-square radius. You have about six or seven on D Street. They have feeding programs. So in the mornings, maybe that overflow of folks that don't get fed at your mission are actually at the, the community centers at the churches. But when you ride through the neighborhood, is this truly what a neighborhood should be? And do folks that, just like other folks in other wards, spend money and an investment in their house, do they have to deal with homeless folks inundating the neighborhood? And, and crime goes up. And, and people are urinating not only on businesses, but they're in folks' backyards. They're in the vacant houses that are there. Good example is, one of our great historic sites burned up just last week, the Moulin Rouge. And I'm just curious to see the results of that investigation of what caused that building to burn up. And I can guarantee you, it's probably vagrants or somebody back there trying to heat a can or something to get a meal, and that's what happened. So why, I will support what you're going to do tonight, because you're not adding anything to the site. I understand you're doing some, something on the interior. But, but I think we certainly have to look at other wards and building rescue missions, just like we do any other design, to take some of this burden off of just this area right here. I just don't think it's right that it all goes right into Ward 5, and it concentrates in one area that just, it just puts a blight on the, on the whole area. Those are my comments.
If I may?
Sure, go ahead.
Just for our part, this project is part of trying to answer some of that by providing more emergency beds for folks. We also work with the homeless who do come in for a meal, trying to encourage them to recognize their need for help and to actually get into our recovery program. We have 120 in our recovery program at the moment. It's a one-year spiritual recovery program, 12-step. And so trying to get people re-acclimated back into society in a positive way and not in a negative. But it is a very real problem, and we're continuing to try to figure out, well, how else can we deal with this?
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or points of discussion?
I had a question for staff earlier, and maybe you can answer it for me. On the northeast corner of the property, there's a fenced area with probably 10, 12 metal shed structures. What, what are those used for?
Some of them are for storage. One of them contains a laundry facility, where we do, you know, wash all the linens for the property. But most of those smaller buildings are, are storage buildings. We also handle the commodities for the state of Nevada in this area. And so that's part of our, our storage system, along with the warehousing on the other side across from the thrift store, where we house the products and the materials.
And you do a great job. Don't get me wrong.
No, it's fine.
Your, your facility is, is phenomenal for what it does do. But I do agree a little bit with, or more than a little bit with Commissioner Goines with regards to the cluster of what's here. My concern is, we, we approve this, you're going to add beds. So you're going to add more capacity to this existing facility.
Correct.
And when you came in before for the building, there was always a concern about, you know, some setbacks and some things based on design. But as this roadwork around here gets done, it's envisioned that this is going to create probably two to three times more traffic at, around your facility. And I, I have a real concern that the large clusters of people on small public sidewalks are, don't mix well with the cars coming on and off the freeway. And I, I just have a real concern, not with what's there today, but adding capacity to that.
The, the ones that are on the sidewalk waiting, though, are primarily connected with meals and clothing giveaways, those kind of things. You've got just a small portion of those are able to stay space-wise in our facility. And I think, as long as you're providing those kind of services, which we need to do, you're going to continue to have the lines. Now, camping on the sidewalk, that's another issue that I think that the Quarter of Hope Committee is also looking at in how to come up with a, an answer that works for how to keep that from being such a problem.
But, but has the committee ever said, you know, there, there's a, there's a nice piece of acreage in, in Wards 1, 2, 3, 4, or 6 that, that could, that we could build a campus exactly like this, and why don't we propose that? And, and I could almost bet the house on it that you'd have half the residents from that ward in here saying, "Not over, not in my yard, not in my yard." Something to think about.
Okay.
Do further discussion. I believe we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared to make a motion on Agenda Item Number, I believe it's 22. My motion would be to, I think on the zoning, the staff is recommending approval. So my motion would be to follow their recommendation for approval.
A motion has been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Mercy Carries. In regards to item number 23?
Agenda item number 23, the variance, which I believe allows 51 spaces where 72 parking spaces are required. I think the applicant has made a compelling argument that they don't need that many spaces. And I think that it would be appropriate to, to allow the variance, so my motion would be for approval.
Motion is made. Please cast your vote. Post. Mercy Carries. Item number 24.
Item number 24, the special use permit that allowed for the expansion. My motion would be for approval for the reasons previously stated.
Motion's been made. Please cast your vote. Post. Mercy Carries.
And lastly, on the site development review, again, it's, it seems to be an interior configuration, nothing being added to the footprint. And I would say that I don't think there are any clear answers to this issue. It's, it's for anybody who drives down there. It's just sad. It's sad for our whole community. It's sad for our whole community. I don't know what the answers are. I certainly understand the whole cluster issue and the fact that it is clustered in one area, and it does create a problem. It's way above my pay grade. My hope is that one day, we can minimize this. And I think some of the programs like yours, or the people that aren't the chronic homeless, but rather those that are in recovery programs and seeking employment and trying to become active again in the community, and not in that spiral of despair. So, I think the site development review, good work, and my motion would be for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote.
And I thank you for your good work.
Thank you. Post.
Commissioner Evans, I think the answer is, spread the wealth. If it was a grocery store in one area and everybody was in that same grocery store, I'm sure somebody would propose putting one another half mile or a mile away to lessen the burden of everybody having to stand in line to get their groceries. So, expand the wealth, because, face it, homelessness is everywhere, it's just not in Ward Five.
It even goes out into Commission Districts, too.
Thank you very much.
All items go forward to Council on June seventeenth.
Now, move to Item Number Twenty-six, variance thirty-three, nine eighty-nine. The applicant owner is San Arth Trust, is to allow an existing three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three square-foot accessory structure, where two thousand and twenty-nine square feet is the maximum size allowed, to be seventeen feet in height, where a height of thirteen point two-five feet is permitted, not to be aesthetically compatible metal with the principal dwelling unit, and to allow for two-foot side yard setback where three feet is the required at thirty-eighteen Ashby Avenue. And that's a two-foot wide side yard, not yard. Staff report, please.
This request is a result of a code enforcement complaint regarding an existing accessory structure that was built without the required building permits. The structure exceeds Title Nineteen Development Standards for maximum area and height, will not be aesthetically compatible with the principal residence, and does not meet the minimum setback required from the property line. Approval of this request will allow the applicant to proceed with the building permit process to keep the structure as it is, while a denial will result in either the removal of the structure or redesign of the structure to meet Title Nineteen Development Standards and the requirement to obtain the necessary building permits prior to modifying the structure. Staff is recommending denial of this request, as no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance has been presented, and the applicant has created self-imposed hardship by constructing the accessory structure prior to obtaining the necessary building permits. Please note that additional protests in our approval have been returned.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to declare the public hearing open and invite anyone in attendance who is to speak on the matter to approach the microphone. We have for the applicant.
Yes, I'm the applicant. My name is Henry Sanchez, I reside at thirty-eighteen Ashby Avenue. Staff's comment, one of the comments was a self-imposed hardship, I had a little bit of help on that. I purchased this residence June of two oh six, and I had a residence about five blocks west of there. While we're moving into this and upgrading the Ashby Avenue address, we started getting burglarized at the other residence before we even finished moving in. So, at that time, it ended up being about two oh seven, I called the City of Las Vegas' Building Department, and I had requested information on how long it would take to get a building permit. And at that time, you know, the city was booming, and they said eight months to a year after plans were generated. But I was between a rock and a hard spot. I've had eight burglaries at that other residence, and none of them have been resolved, solved, you know? So, I took it upon myself to protect my property. I started, I'm a builder anyway, but I started construction of the slab first, then I brought my stuff over, but it was all designed for a structure. I had contacted several neighbors that had no problem with it. And I don't like to break the law or do something, you know, I didn't have much choice. This burglary problem is county-wide and statewide, I believe, because we have a retreat out at Trump and the same problem. If you're not there, you're being burglarized. So, I ended up bringing a lot of my stuff and equipment over there to protect it. I, you know, I've heard rumors, I went to the neighborhood meeting yesterday, that they think I'm building a facility to, like a commercial facility, it was not. I'm a classic car enthusiast, I have numerous classic cars, and that's what I wanna finish this and put in there. The height, there's an issue on that, is because, you know, working on classic cars is occasion that, you know, that you have to lift them. I'm sixty-six years old, I can't crawl into the cars anymore. So, we anticipated putting a hoister eventually. Oh, let me think, what else? We're zoned RE, which is, you know, horse property. You know, I'm not positive on this, but I could actually build a barn, I guess, Ashby Avenue.
That new Chrysler dealership that went out of business got a building?
Yeah.
Yeah, wanna look out there.
Anyway, I've got this map, if you can see it. This is my residence here. I've got approval from the neighbors all around me. This to the north is all commercial. I have a neighbor over here that has approved.
Do you have signed letters? Do you have a signed letter?
Yes.
From the, that you can provide?
I have, I went to the city today to take some more of these in. Last Friday, I took some, my attorney advised me to put waivers of objection to the project, and I put it right below the city's letter, but they told me that they didn't make it a part of the agenda today, so I brought another copy.
If you give it to the clerk, it'll be part of the agenda.
You know, and there's thirteen approvals there.
It's all here.
I don't know how many oppositions at this time. But, you know, I appealed to this board and the good neighbors of McNeil Estates to approve this. I'm sixty-six years old, I have this hobby with these classic cars, and for the time that I've got left, you know, I've had to bypass, I've had knee surgery, I've got high blood pressure, I'm a diabetic. I appeal to you, just let me enjoy what time I've got left with my hobby. Do you have anything to say, Jeff?
Jeff Grover, seventy-one, fifty-five, Polaris Avenue. Any questions regarding the height or the aesthetics issues, the specific requests of the variance? If you'd need to address them to me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who is to speak on the matter, sir?
My name is Kevin Efermson, I reside at two-nine-oh-one Ashby Avenue, which is four doors down across the street from the residence in question. I'm here to speak in strong opposition to this situation. I have talked to five neighbors on Ashby Avenue, all of whom opposed this, all of whom said they were sending in their opposition. I noticed that I had faxed in an opposition, and it was not attached.
Me, too.
I resent it today, but I sent it in four days ago, and it was not in the material on the website. But let me note that, to condone somebody building a facility like this as incompatible and out of structure in this type of neighborhood, which has existed for forty years, I've lived in the neighborhood over thirty-five years, and then condone it after it's done is just unconscionable. The neighbor across the street, three years ago, acquired the property on Ashby Avenue. He came in and requested a permit to build a steel building in back of his home, higher than his home, to store classic cars. It was opposed by the neighborhood, it was voted down by the planning commission, it was voted down by the city council. And now, somebody else who went out and built a structure like this without permits expects to be granted approval for the very type of structure that the other neighbor was voted down on because of the opposition of the neighborhood. Anybody who's lived in this town for any length of time is aware of Ashby Avenue, it's existed for fifty years in McNeil Estates. It is one of the prime areas in that area. Most of these properties are an acre, some slightly under an acre, some slightly over an acre. But this building is totally incompatible with anything else in the area. It sticks out as you drive down Ashby Avenue, over into the side of the residence is clearly visible, there is no other metal building in that area. And as I say, somebody who tried to do it the right way, got voted down, and I just say, it is unconscionable for anybody to contemplate approving somebody who went ahead and did it without permits. Because as he tried to seek this in the first time, the opposition would have been there, and he would not be in the situation he's in today. And I strongly urge you to oppose this, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who is to speak? Please sign your name, so we have a record of your participation.
Renee Polly, twenty-six oh six Mason, I live on the street over. I'm also the secretary for the association, our homeowners' association. I've gotten several people that were concerned about this structure, and it's just not compatible with the feel of the neighborhood that we're trying to preserve. You know, we're battling people tearing down their houses and building Summerland Spanish houses, and to have something like this in the neighborhood just doesn't do anything to preserve one of the more historic neighborhoods in the town. So, I would, you know, if he had built something that was within the rules, and that was not so visible from the street and looked industrial, I don't think anyone would have had a problem with that, because we have other people that refurbish cars, so, and they just don't have structures like this. So, anyway, that's basically it.
Thank you.
Mamick, I'm looking at this picture, you can't even see the building right now out of this picture, but it is visible, probably one-eighth of it, but it's an architectural panel building. It's not a pre-engineered building, it's a custom-built steel building that's got medallion lock architectural panels, it's white to match the house. The height is, in my experience of building, and I was in construction, I've been in construction for fifty years, unless things changed, and it wasn't disclosed to me, on the Ashby, the McNeil Estates, it used to be that you could build a garage, a detached garage, as long as it wasn't bigger than your home.
I wonder, let's finish, let the other public speaker, before you go back on. I think I've got you just, sir, you're...
Yeah, my name's Dave Laurias, and I live directly next door to Henry, and our family's property line is right on where this is being built.
Your address, sir?
It's three-zero-one-zero, Ashby Avenue. It's very tough for me to be up here, because I care about Henry and Shirley a lot, they're incredible people and great neighbors, so for me, it's tough being here. But my family adamantly and clearly opposes this construction. We wouldn't have much of an issue with it, but we've had two appraisers over to our house, and it directly blocks our view of every, I mean, it's a very tall structure, so, you know, my father is in rage over this situation, so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else who is to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone. Seeing none, let the public hearing close and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion, and I'm sure the issues we were bringing up will get a chance in a second.
Commissioner?
Please, go ahead.
I visited Mr. Sanchez at your house, and thank you for having me. I just showed up and you welcomed me into your home, and I was in your backyard. And what you have to understand, as the Ward One Commissioner, it's my job to be the keeper of the ward and to preserve why we chose to live in that ward. And Ashby, in my opinion, is like a diamond in the rough. It's a place where you are privileged to live, and people stay there. They don't go to Summerland, they don't go to Green Valley. I have listed eight families that have been there for over twenty years that chose that street, that neighborhood, to live in because of, just because of the oldness and because of the location. My concern about your building is twofold. Number one, it is definitely going to decrease the value of your neighbors on all sides of you, of their homes. And the second thing is, directly behind you, yeah, it is commercial, so if we go ahead and allow you to do it, then what's to say that we can't, we're not gonna be able to say no to the next person or the next person? So, the buck has to stop with you, it can't start with you. And I feel like your neighbor that lives next door to you, you're so hard to say no to, because you're such a nice man, but the bottom line is, when you have the Tabor families, the Matthews, the Weisners, the Venas, the Higgins, the Olsons, people that spent a ton of money to stay down there and keep Ward One alive, it's my job to protect that neighborhood and that street, so I will not be supporting this item tonight as much as I like you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I don't know you, sir, so I don't, that can't be a factor in my thoughts. I am alarmed, though, that you say you've been a builder for fifty years or in the construction business, and you wouldn't know that this requires a permit and that it doesn't meet code. I mean, it's, I think you might be allowed to have something in the neighborhood of two thousand square feet, if you met certain architectural requirements, but this is three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three square feet, built without a permit, and I would disagree with you about the architectural integrity of it, it's basically a metal shed. Now, I will grant you that it isn't that visible from several of the houses on the street, but people next door absolutely would be visible. And my concern is, it backs up into, I think Charleston, which would be commercial, if I'm not mistaken. And I'm worried that, and some of the people in the neighborhood have voiced that concern, that it leads the possibility that this great neighborhood could end up with a street like Ashby with a commercial component to it. I guess it all comes down to thoughtfulness, and this thing is just way too big, it affects your property values to your people, your neighbors immediately adjacent to you, it's not permitted, it's far in excess of what's allowable, and I think McNeil Estates is probably one of the finest neighborhoods in the city, and they clearly don't like it, I clearly don't like it, and it won't seem my support.
Mr. Chairman?
I don't know if this condition is seen, but, you know, you're welcome to come look at. My concern is, you know, I have almost an acre of property that's forty thousand square feet, I have a four thousand square foot home, I've done nothing but upgrades there. In fact, almost every person on Ashby complimented us when we did the green thing there, we took out four thousand square feet of grass and shrubs and put in desert landscaping, and Mr., somebody mentioned Mr. Tabor, he lives way down on Strong and Ashby, and he stopped one day and complimented us on what our yard looks like.
And I'm sure I congratulate you on your yard, too, but I'd like to hear from Commissioner Buckley, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm familiar with the area, and I walk it a lot in the morning, but it seems to me that the real issue is that this, we're talking about a variance of the property, and I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, I don't think it has to do with your personal circumstances, it has to do with the property itself. And I don't see anything, you know, it's not exceptionally narrow or shallow, or the shape, or exceptional topographic conditions, or other extraordinary and exceptional situations. So, I just simply think that it's just not possible to grant a variance here, I just don't see that it meets any criteria. It's nothing to do with you, it just is to do with the fact that it doesn't meet the legal basis for giving a variance.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? I think we're ready for a motion. I think we're ready for motion.
Just real quickly, how long did it take you to, is the building finished completely?
It's about 90% done.
Exterior and interior?
No, just the shell.
Just the shell. How long did it take you to construct that?
Well, we, we probably started excavating, I had, what I had was six feet of weeds in the back behind, there's a little asphalt thing. And we started probably in September of 2007. That's what I called the building department. And it says, you know, it takes a couple of months probably to generate plans and then you got to go for review and, and now it was...
So it's a little over two years now that you've been working on this?
Uh, in September, probably about two years.
So let me ask Director Wheeler, if, if this is denied, is there a timetable to have this structure come down or is another two years before it's disassembled?
If I may, the time in which to obtain permits is, is not that long. If the project is denied and even on their plans, they show what are the required setbacks, they could come in with plans to redesign the project to meet setbacks and meet code and then obtain their permits for that structure and modify what they've built. Or they would remove the whole thing, that would be their choice. There's a significant area and a significant amount of construction that this lot could accommodate.
Right. So I guess there is a design that could fit, that's compatible. So I, I would suggest that be the route you go to probably reduce it and get it to a point where it is feasible. And I think you may even regain some of your neighbor's support and approval of that.
Well, I had the support. Unfortunately, my neighbor to the east...
I don't see much support. I actually see some streets on here I don't even see on the map so that say they're for it. So I don't see all that. I see overwhelming opposition to it, so...
The city, the city notified everybody within a mile. They sent me 19 homeowners associations that they had notified. So yeah, there would probably be some, some from other neighborhoods.
Okay. Anyone here to initiate the motion?
I'd like to make the motion.
Before you make the motion, Mr. Chairman, I just need to disclose that there is a, an agent in my office that actually represents a commercial building within this notice area, has no effect on my actions and I will vote on this item.
Okay, now we're ready for motion.
Thank you. I'm going to follow staff's recommendation of denial on variance 33989.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries.
And that denial is a final action unless an appeal is filed with the office of the city clerk within 10 days.
To go to city council?
Right. I wish to appeal.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 31, which is special use permit 33973. The applicant is Laborio Markets, number 13, Inc. The owner is Charleston Vegas, number 1 LLC for proposed grocery store with an accessory structure, structure packaged store off sale at 4440 East Charleston Avenue. Staff report, please.
This is a request to allow off-sale packaged liquor sales within a proposed grocery store located in an exist, in an existing shopping center. The sales of packaged liquor will be ancillary to the sales of other grocery items. Staff is recommending approval of this request as the proposed use can be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Please note one additional protest was received.
Thank you. Now to clear the public hearing open, invite anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give their name for the record, sign the sheet to, if you would, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Justin Smurber from Ryan Law Firm, 630 South 4th Street. Also have present with me Jim Sanchez of Laborio Markets and Lester Paley, who's the architect who actually designed the store. As the staff indicated, this is Laborio Markets' application for a special use permit for packaged liquor off sale. I think it's important for the commission to know and take note of that this is a site that previously had a similar special use permit. It was a Vons, it was a grocery store. This will be a grocery store as well. The pro, or the, the grocery store is located in a service commercial land use designation. It's what it's designed for. We believe that the permit's necessary in order to make the grocery store competitive with other establishments of its nature in the, in the community. Staff recommendation is for approval. We'd obviously request that the commission follow staff recommendation. However, my client and I are present, we can answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed. Did this site have a liquor license on it when it was in Albertson's? Does anyone know? Vons, I'm sorry.
Vons, Vons.
Yes, it did.
It did? Thank you.
Yeah, that's correct. Mr. Chairman?
If there are no other comments, if there's no others, I'll make a motion for follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote. Post? Motion carries.
That goes forward to city council on June 17.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We now move to item number 32, which is special use permit 34014. The applicant owner is Easy Pond Nevada, Inc. A major amendment to an approved special use permit for a 1,656 square foot expansion to an existing pawn shop with a waiver to allow a zero-foot separation from a parcel zone for residential use where 200 feet is required at 2,200 South Rainbow Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to amend the approved special use permit to allow the expansion of an existing pawn shop located within a commercial subdivision. The submitted plans indicate that the area of expansion will be used for additional storage. A waiver of the required distance separation is necessary as the subject, subject site shares a common property line with a residential property to the east. Staff is recommending approval of this request as the use has existed at the subject location for more than three years and can continue to be conducted in a manner that is compatible with the surrounding land uses. Please note additional protests have been received.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Name, please.
Hi, Marin Perry, 100 North...
If you're here to sign in so they know who you are.
Got it. 100 North City Parkway. Apparently our address was recently changed, so I need to remember that. Now it's North City Parkway, Suite 1750, representing Easy Pond. And this is the Easy Pond which was approved three, probably three and a half years ago at Rainbow and Sahara. It's right near the Harley Davidson, the new Harley Davidson dealership. The secondhand dealer, a licensed secondhand dealer, it was called the Secret Closet next door, closed almost a year ago and our clients were interested in the opportunity to expand their storage. That's all this application is for. There will be no additional storefront. They'll close off the, the front door and it will be storage only. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Farlow, who are you?
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Will firearms be stored here?
Stored?
Sold.
Ooh, I believe that they are stored. They are not sold. Typically what, and what I've, what I understand is actually this store, I, I think I have been here before on this matter, but it was a pawn plus and it was sold to Easy Pond. Prior to being an Easy Pond, it did accept all types of firearms for pawn, but it did not sell any of them. And in fact, anytime it took a gun, in order to give it back to its owner, it did go through the whole firearms background check process, even to go back to the person who originally brought it. But if a gun is taken in pawn, it, it will not be sold. It's sent to a, a licensed ATF wholesaler and then it's, it's taken away. And since the change to Easy Pond, no longer, it no longer takes, let me make sure I get this right, handguns, but it will accept in pawn shotguns and rifles.
Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn over the planning commissioners for discussion, possible motion.
Commissioner, thank you. I visited your site and I was amazed at how well-placed everything was and how much stuff you had and how much room you needed to grow. I looked at everything, but the one thing I didn't ask is where are those guns stored? I don't remember asking or seeing the location. Are they locked up? Are they in a vault? I didn't ask. I looked at everything else, but that...
There is, let's see, if I, if I can point, let's see, I'm going to ask Mr. Allwine, who is the general manager for this area, to come and make sure I'm telling you this correctly, but I believe there is a safe.
Kenny Allwine, 212 Las Vegas Boulevard. There is a safe area in there. It's guarded by Lexum Steel Mesh. It's required by the ATF that they're secured and locked up.
Thank you. Any more questions? If not, I think we're ready for motion.
I'm ready to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, SUP 34014, with all conditions.
Motion's been made, please cast your vote.
And for the record, that guns are taken in, but not sold except to licensed representatives.
Got it.
Motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post? Motion carries.
Goes forward to council, June 17.
Thank you.
We'll now do item number 38 and then we'll take a short break afterwards. Item number 38 is vacation, 34001. The applicant owner is Sheshai Development, Inc., to vacate 10 feet of a 20-foot wide public alley north of Red Coach Avenue and west of Rainbow Boulevard alignment. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to vacate public right of way, which is required to proceed with the development of a storage facility previously approved by site development plan review. Staff is recommending approval of this request as, as the public right of way is required for that development. Please note that additional protests have been received and that the ward for this item is Ward Four and not Ward Six.
Thank you. Now I'd like to clear the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Armstrong, 2727 South Rainbow. Here representing the applicant. We concur with staff recommendations and I respectfully request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak on the matter?
Yeah, my name's Robert Eagle, 4686 Balsam Street. Could I ask the staff what the reason for this vacate is for?
Legitimate question? The applicant?
It's an application made by, by the owner of the property in order to vacate the right of way.
Why would they want to do that?
Yeah, let's, let's cut out the middle, man. Let the applicant answer those questions directly. Thank you.
Jeffrey Armstrong, it serves a couple of purposes. First, it was a condition number 18 for the site development review and we are just trying to satisfy that condition.
And the condition 18 is what?
Condition 18 requires that we vacate 10 feet of the public bridle path, generally located north of Red Coach. It also serves another purpose. The other purpose is the storage building and outside storage that we have to meet the setback requirements, the vacation is required to meet that requirement.
So basically what you're saying is, is that you want to take public right of way to meet the conditions that you have designed this property for?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that city staff requested that we vacate the property.
No, I, I would disagree with you on that, sir, because if you would have designed this proper...
The question, the question is now resolved into a, a debate and just...
We can't, we can't debate an item?
No, sir. Just you can ask the questions of me and I'll...
Okay. What, what, what I'm, I'm trying to ascertain here is, is that this has been a public right of way for over 50 years.
Correct.
Okay. It's going to create an undue hardship on the owners of the adjacent properties on Balsam Street. Our homes were designed 50 years ago with access to the back. I cannot get to the back of my property from the front of my property because of fences and mature landscaping that have been there for 45 years. And then they come along and they can't design within the rules and regulations that the city has set for setbacks and size of buildings and all these other things that you do. They come along and say, well, to meet what we want to do, we want to take away my access to the back of my property. I have, I have RV, I have a, an enclosed car trailer. I can't get this in a 10-foot area. I can't even make the swing into my property.
Thank you. Are you, is your property north of this...
Yes.
...vacation? Okay. And you have no other entrance rather than off Red Coach?
No, I don't. The, and also this, this would set precedent for the rest of the properties along there. Because once you approve this, if you do, which I really hope you don't, because this is really going to hurt me bad, the rest of the people that develop along Rainbow are going to ask for the same thing, to get a free piece of 10-foot of property. I, I would think that when these people that are developers buy property, that they would know what your rules and regulations are. But they come in here, I mean, we've been down here, I don't know, 100 times where all the stuff is going on on our street. And it just amazes me how they can come in and change all the rules and regulations to suit their needs. And we, the neighbors in our homes, we're the ones that have paid for all this. It's not right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter?
Zap you? Hot stuff? My name's Kenny Rogers. I live at 4668 Balsam Street. I am here tonight representing myself and my neighbor to the south, Ms. Cameo, who is a city employee. If this right of way is allowed to go through, ladies and gentlemen, the fire department would have no access into the back of that property. It's going to be a storage area. If a fire should happen, they would have no way to get in there. There are power lines on that right of way. The electric company would not be able to get in to service the power lines. I have called them, I'd not get an answer back. I spoke with Ms. Cameo and she said that she had also contacted, since she worked for the city, some people and didn't get a response back. So I'm in the same predicament as Mr. Eagle and Ms. Cameo is also, we would not have any egress to the back of our property. The property has been, that right of way has been there, as Mr. Eagle said, for some 50 years. Could someone tell me if they're going to make a buffer zone or something out? The, the 10 feet that they're asking for is going to be, well, there's no way that emergency vehicles or any, a repair of vehicles could get in there. So what were the, why, why does he want the extra 10 feet? I don't understand that, sir. Can somebody really fill me in on that?
Yes. We'll, we'll let the applicant respond to that part and we'll let public work system respond to the, the other portion of your question. Are you, have you completed your, your presentation or do you have more?
Well, I know Mr. Ashen and, and he's a, he's a pretty good guy in a lot of ways, but he's asking for an awful lot here. And there must be another way. I would think at the very least, if they are making a green buffer zone out of that and he wants to put a wall on his property line and leave the 10 feet and the, the council would waive the green buffer zone, I wouldn't see any problem with that. It is an alley and there are walls there. I don't know why you would need a buffer zone to, for the aesthetic view, wouldn't mean a thing, absolutely nothing. So I'm asking you to please give us some very serious thought. The gentleman's going to be getting a couple thousand square feet of property for free and then we would not have access to the backs of our properties.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I understand.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter, please approach the microphone.
Frank Alproni, 4614 Balsam Street. It's the Balsam saga again. I concur with Mr. Eagle that they're asking for something so they can complete what they decided to do. They don't look ahead, they just come in and say, we can get anything. Mr. Sejman asked for vacation on Balsam Street a while back so he can conduct his business. Well, he keeps on conducting his business, but he's never vacated the street because he lost the vacation on it because he was in partnership with somebody else and Mr. Sejman did enclose escrow. But he still continued to operate in the form he is. I'm in, I'm in concurrence with my neighbors. In fact, they show you a fence once in a while that's over the line, that's my fence. I bought that... Mr. Seijan asked for vacation on Balsam Street a while back, so he can conduct his business. Well, he keeps on conducting his business, but he's never vacated the street, because he lost the vacation on it, because he was in partnership with somebody else, and Mr. Seijan did an enclosed escrow. But he still continued to operate in the form he is. I'm in concurrence with my neighbors. In fact, they show you a fence once in a while that's over the line, that's my fence. I bought that property in '75, and that fence was there in '75. And I feel Mr. Seijan should be required to follow what he bought. He bought that piece of property, he didn't buy the bridle path. That belongs to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter? Okay, seeing that, we'll declare the public hearing closed, and give the applicant the opportunity to respond to the Greens' page request, and we'll wait for Public Works to respond about the access.
Jeffrey Armstrong again. First item, the 10 feet, the bridle path was taken from these properties originally. We are not taking anything back that wasn't belonged to us. We are trying to satisfy condition, condition number 18 of our site development review. We're not requesting this. City staff required us to vacate this property, and that's all we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff?
Lucian Public Works. I'll first address the issue of the actual path. We look back at the recorded map for this area, and the path was dedicated as a bridle path or a horse trail. No specific mention is made for vehicular access. Although people may have been using it for that purpose, we don't see anything on a map that actually allows that. Notice that the parcels have access, appear to have access to Balsam. Note that they are in the county, and a similar situation like this has occurred, just one bridle path west of this area with the Inspirado Apartments. The city decided, council decided to allow, you know, vacation of the city's portion of the bridle path, assuming that 10 foot, 10 feet wide is enough to turn a horse around. As far as the utility companies, when we vacate public right-of-way, our franchise agreements require us to maintain easements for those utilities that already have facilities in the path. So although we may vacate the right-of-way, rights will remain for the utilities to access their facilities.
So I, well, so if one of these property owners decides to buy a couple of horses and wants to use the bridle path, it will now be gone?
Yes, we'll say until 10 feet, the city side will be gone.
And when they bought their homes, you know, they did so perhaps under the intention of riding their horses up and down that bridle path. And we'd be denying them that.
But there will be a 10-foot wide on the county side, still remaining.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please do.
Wouldn't it seem appropriate to hear this with all the other applications, since this is an integral part of all the other things that we obey?
Actually, it's not. The properties that you obey are to the south. This is to the north of Red Coach. This is a completely separate property.
But isn't part of the conditions for approval on your site development plan that you have to achieve the vacation?
No, it's not. It's for the site development plan for the mini-storage. The other, the other application is for an office development to the south. This is completely separate, even though it's the same owner.
So everything related to this has already been heard?
Yes, and approved, back in June of 2008.
So why did the vacation come forward now? Maybe, can someone...
Because we submitted our improvement plans. In order to get our improvement plans approved, we have to get the vacation approved and recorded.
So if the vacation is not approved, how does your, how does that affect your improvement plans?
You would have to tell me. We can't go forward. It's a condition of approval.
I'm just curious for staff.
I would like to see the...
That is correct. It is a condition of approval of the original site plan to vacate that portion, as the original site plan indicated that that area would be used for the landscape buffer that's required. So to clarify, the applicant's plans originally didn't have the landscape buffer. It was required by the action of the Planning Commission and City Council, and as such, in order to gain that property, a vacation was required.
Now it's, now it's coming into focus. So if you were to adhere to condition 18, they would require, be required to have a landscape buffer there?
Well, that's what's planned for that area. If the vacation were denied...
Are they asking to get away from the 10-foot landscape buffer?
We requested a waiver, it was a 15-foot, we requested it down to 10, which will meet the 10 by the vacation of this...
So the, so the 10-foot on the county side and the 10-foot on the city side, open space, let's call it, rather than a bridle tail or anything, let's just say it's open space, there'll still remain a 20-foot wide open space between the two properties?
No, it will not.
We'd be cutting it to 10?
It'll be reduced to 10 feet in that area.
Well, that, and that has what impact on access to the other properties? Eliminates it?
Well, it doesn't eliminate it, it eliminates it to any vehicular access, but you still have 10 feet where you could walk, or a horse could actually ride down. We're not cutting off the access, we're just adjusting it, basically.
Please do.
So, as the neighbor is saying, he, for years, drove his motor home down there and accessed. The original intent, I think from Public Works, was that that was always meant to be for horses or a buggy, and never for vehicular traffic to go down there. Okay? So, so the residents that were using it, were using it for the wrong reason to access it, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Playing games with you some more. It currently is 20-foot wide?
It is.
And it's no longer going to be 20-foot wide?
Correct. It will be 10 feet, just on that portion of the property.
And so these people for 45 or 50 years have operated on the premise that they've got a 20-foot wide strip there?
Correct.
Okay.
And I apologize, I didn't, I didn't vote on the previous mini-stories when this was approved. And I need to ask the city attorney, because I abstained on the site plan, but that was a noticed area, and the vacation is strictly a piece of dirt, so it's not really a, I don't have a conflict with...
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, your reason for abstention before was what?
One of my partners owns property within, owns property within the noticed area. So, I mean, I just felt it was prudent to abstain at that point, but...
Okay, but tonight, you're saying that you don't think you need to abstain because...
It's, vacations aren't really noticed in a great distance. It's the adjacent property owners that typically come in and have their disputes. It's not a, three blocks away, I'm affected by it.
Right, so, no, you have no pecuniary interest in adjacent property to the noticed area?
Absolutely not.
Then I think that it's okay for you to vote.
Okay. And part of the history of this, I mean, I understand the neighbors. This has been 20, 30 years, or at least 20 years of impact from the Beltway out there, I mean, when '95 was built. In all the years I've lived here and lived out in this area, I don't think I've ever seen any horses on the bridle path, but that's here or there, I understand the bridle path. But it just seems like this is, this whole neighborhood's been death by a thousand cuts. And it seems to me that in the effort to be a neighbor, the property owner could reach out to everybody and work some, I mean, this is just, I mean, it's going to be down to the last man standing here. And that's, that's a little concerning, because if one of these houses that's just north of here appears to have a riding ring in the back, now whether they ride horses in or out, or trailer them in or out, I think they probably have a legitimate argument, why, you know, why don't, why's my access changed? Why do, why do what I have today change for something they didn't do? I would think that the site plan of what you were proposing could have been modified slightly that didn't require this vacation. I know we vacated on the other side of Balsam because there was a full stretch of property, and it really, there was nobody coming and going from those properties. If there's people coming and going, then they probably have some, some real concern, but this seems to me like the neighbors could work this all out.
Anyone, anyone care to jump in and make a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I just would observe that it's, you know, it seems that the Planning Commission and the City Council approved a particular development plan that contemplated this vacation, and that if it is indeed death by a thousand cuts, it's still going to die. I mean, I guess the question is whether, now, let's say you make them go back and redesign this plan to give them back the 10 feet, but yet this area is really, it's changing, it's dying in certain areas. I mean, there's, there's such conflict between one side of the block and the other side of the block. You know, what happens when now you just have the 10 feet out there? I, I'm kind of conflicted here. I, I see there was an approval. I'm actually, I'm actually, as I read the backup, it seems like the, the staff and Public Works went out and said there were no reasons not to vacate, and I'm not sure that what we heard tonight backed that up. So I guess I'm, I'm also concerned whether the staff has a full appreciation of what that path is used for.
And believe me, I don't believe there, it's been a valid horse path or anything for, for longer than any of us can remember. And it, but the neighbors are making representations that it is, and they're directly affected by it, so they, they should have some, from a vacation principle, we should listen to, so it's, but this was approved, and it was approved as a commercial development, went through the zoning, went through City Council, and like Commissioner Buckley said, it was contemplated as part of that approval, so if staff is on board, I don't, this is a real tough deal, but I don't see, I don't think we're going to see horses up and down that, that thing very soon.
I don't think so either.
I may have been facetious, but probably a more legitimate criticism is Nevada Power is, typically does a lot of their maintenance, Nevada Energy does a lot of maintenance using large trucks. Would that same large truck be able to maneuver in that 10-foot wide space that remains?
Let me just, as far as, I've been out there this past week, and I noticed that one property to the south has the alley completely blocked off. So if Nevada Power is accessing, it's accessing through the north. As far as turning around, 20 feet isn't enough to turn around in any event, so they're probably either going in and then backing, coming backing out, or backing in and working on those poles. Again, with the vacation, we're still maintaining easements for Nevada Power, so regardless of what we do as far as relinquishing our rights as the city's rights, Nevada Power's rights will remain the same to the franchise agreement. I'm not sure what their requirements are for spacing, and I would say the applicant would have to get with Nevada Power to say what landscaping is going to actually work for their access.
We've already met with them, and we are providing a five-foot easement along the 10 feet that we are vacating.
And you had mentioned that one of the ends is blocked off? Which end is there?
The south end. The south end has a post fence that has blocked off the alley or the bridle path. And he, the neighbor said that he had done, that's his for several years, but it is blocked, the access is already blocked off to the south.
Mr. Chairman, I think, you know, maybe one issue really that, that would clarify this, and it seems to me that normally the Planning Commission would not support the vacation if somebody's going to be denied some kind of access, and that just kind of seems common sense. I'm not so concerned about the utilities. They're, they're, they can certainly get their easement, and I think that's covered in the, in the code. But I guess I'm thinking that if we have people who say they use this access, then really that sort of undermines a basis to give up that access. And I'm just looking through here, if someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I was handed the staff report, the items that came before us in August of last year, 8/20 of '08, the general plan amendment, the, the zone changes, the variances, everything, it said the Planning Commission recommended denial of all aspects of that application. So I would see no reason why I would vote differently now. So I think to be consistent, I will, you will not see my support.
Well, on August 20th, it was approved by the City Council, all those actions.
No, I, it may well have, but I'm just saying that I voted no. Previous said this commission voted no, so I don't know that anything's changed.
Understood.
I'd just be consistent in my vote. Thank you.
What I've been trying to get to is, how much space is going to be back there? You had told me that there was going to be 10 feet.
Correct.
And the planning rep said there would be an additional five, which would give us the 15. The biggest difference is, 10 feet, you'd have a difficult time getting a motor home through. 15, you've got enough room to get it through. And so my question is, how much space would be there to get a large vehicle through, whether it be a Nevada Power maintenance truck or a privately-owned RV? Do we know how much it's going to be?
I would tell you that would be 10 feet.
Okay.
The five feet that I spoke about would be an easement.
Thank you. Okay, ready for a motion?
Did you close, public?
No, okay. Mr. Farlow?
Mr. Chairman, there's three things. Number one, I saw a transformer on that pole. If Nevada Power has to put a transformer on a pole, they have to spread out the stabilizers on that truck, and they go beyond 10 feet, I can tell you that. That's one. The other thing I want to make clear, when I buy a property, what it's zoned for, I expect that zoning to be 50 years, 100 years out. If it's zoned for a horse, and I don't have a horse now, if I want a horse 50 years from now and ride it when I'm 105 years old or whatever, I still, I bought that property for that purpose, and I think, I support the neighbors on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready for, to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to move for denial of this, just simply on the basis that it appears to me that there's still a need for access to this public alley.
Okay, motion's been made, please cast your votes. Post? Motion for denial carries?
That goes forward with a recommendation of denial to the City Council on June 17th.
Thank you very much.
We'll now take a brief recess. Will now take a brief recess?
And it is what? As are we. And we brought our coalition with us. No, 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 we're all for it. No, we just, this is just-
This is a weird, this is a weird, this is a weird thing, I mean. Well, not like, like the late, uh, Mr. Farlow, but we have a lot of business, and so yes, I'm enjoying it. Unlike the other general, the setup hundred, I've actually talked to people about it.
Okay, yeah.
And on more than several occasions, we've been the last five in the year.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And on one, I was thought it was literally two or five years ago.
Really?
Yeah, about two, three years ago.
Everything commercial, maybe, or everything else before?
Well, everything else before us, and we're just sitting here just going, oh my God, you know.
Well, we weren't not so afraid it's, is that why we didn't deal with the survey?
Well, we actually, we learned opening up local bars and watching TV. However, Triple George changed their service from cable to the dish, and the dish doesn't get channel two.
Oh, really?
So tonight, we made a point of telling them, we would sit there and have at least purchased the posters between the two.
Right.
At that moment, if they had really had it, but they didn't. And because this was now, I mean, we left there a few minutes after six, they come simple past nine, you know. So now, I mean, I've been had five or six things in that span of time.
At least, yeah.
I'm quite eloquent in myself. But instead, I'm seeing yourself wishing, watching it on television. I lost a dollar all that last night, I thought that they were gonna approve that. But I then, but you doubled up, the City Council's, I wanted to prove it, so I'm pretty certain I'm gonna make my money back without.
For you as well, where?
Yeah, I may, I'm a future citizen, I do a bit of it. I actually, down with my sister, and my association, really, really, I'm so proud of her, so I'm glad she got to, so forth. And we've been very vocal in the insanity process we've had across, which this threshold document tonight is really, for us, it's a major, six years.
Well, I just, I moved here about, and started-
You haven't experienced summer yet?
Well, I'm from Phoenix, though, originally.
In Unisummer?
But yeah, I've been in Chicago, I've been in Chicago for 10 years, and I was happy to leave the polls, and I'm, but, so I've been, uh, working hard, trying to stay in the department, and I'm working right now.
Love, there's that, we have been, make them sit, yeah, I was taking a little nap.
Survey's a pretty good one.
Yeah. We will not, we will not, the word love, true love, council is a big, he was the one who told me a decade ago, if you did form association, you'd get preferred. And that was our big training. We did that, now we have a strong association.
The board, and-
Yeah, we have a very strong board, there's no less. It was a make it true. No, no. They might put me back.
Well, is, are you guys doing the work then around First Friday, and all those contracts?
Before there was First Friday, there was make it.
Okay.
That was when I was in, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And Steve actually, Steve Adams, I referred to my house, I bought a couple houses over on Oak and 15. I bought two worst houses in my domain, and I spent a lot of time contemplating anti-graffiti, how you do it, what do you do. And, you know, I think I devised some pretty good things. And I never really thought, did anyone notice? And he noticed, and I'm like, wow!
There you go.
Wow, so really, really solid. I put some serious, serious thought into that.
Yeah.
It is, it is.
Um, I will, sorry, I'm doing, well, I just moved, I've just moved here about six months ago, and I've been, I'm very new, I don't know any, but.
This is a murder show, so is it.
Well, we'll act like citizens, not a liar.
Yeah, that's right.
We'll convince our officer in fact, that's awesome.
Oh, it comes out.
Well, you know, if you've been to the last, like, rounded up a whole-
Well, you know, you know, it's gonna take this long, absolutely. We gotta get back by nine. I know, we're also gonna walk the car, I'm gonna walk home.
Hell's yard is screwed, Tom.
It's paced by peace.
Paced by peace. And listen, you guys are doing a great job down there.
Paced by peace, and paced by peaceful peace.
Now, these guys can't set by each other.
Why?
Because I said so.
That's what I've been saying the whole time.
That's right, that's right. Separate them.
I've been doing it the whole time, make it keep happening. She keeps going, Jack, come over here, oh. What is this over? He's gonna be a trouble.
We're about ready to separate the new sections, why don't you go up there, why don't you go there, I'll sit. No, no, I said we're here till midnight. You're gonna sit here till midnight. It's all over, we could go home now, but we wouldn't leave and sit here and tell the new section.
Oh, come on, let's go.
Because I wanna sit.
Mom, please, I'm scared here, it's not a surprise.
Because, because I wonder- Oh, you're buying?
No, you're buying.
No, but the, Kathy and Ashley did some great stuff.
Oh, that's right.
Anybody know what's going on? It's Chinese.
Chinese, Chinese, that's, indeed.
I don't want a big neck, though.
Well, first step, make one, there, you make one.
Do you have a thousand nine?
No, I just, I threw it away.
Do you have hamburger buns?
Actually, fries don't come to you.
Are you guys gonna give me trouble?
Of course.
Why can't they just over?
We're also freezing.
No, because we're just-
Wait, so they make me go to work.
You know, I, 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 from the bottom of my heart, I have to thank you. I, I didn't think anyone, I put so much thought into how to like be graffiti proof, and look good, and get privacy. I thought no one, no other world has any idea.
You've already, I've already paid you, you're my friend.
No, you're making us stay here.
I got a house over on Oak and 15, it's right in the corner. Yeah, it was a, it was a six-foot fence, it was probably supposed to be a five, and went right to the sidewalk, which is kind of normal, you know, through there. And, yeah, what happens is the kids can buy it, and they're, the pencil or whatever, just, just it's right there. So five, that, that's all, three feet, four feet, something like that, put a little one-foot planter, and put the pampas grass, which, which, because they were mature, in the first season, they grew big. And my thought process, if you're walking by this, there's something buffering you, you're not gonna reach across and mess with, because it's gonna mess with you. And if you get any all the privacy, boy, I hope hours.
Can you do, can you do the threshold requirements first, so we can go home?
Okay.
That's what we're here for.
Oh, we have, I came to praise here, not to bury. To say what a magnificent.
That's not me, it's Chris and Dave.
Now, now, I learned the lesson, I learned the lesson on the front yard, though, you know. I put those nice little grass strips, because I like the grass, but I don't want enough to have to actually have a mower, so it has to be a hand push, has to be small enough, where's-
Good.
Well, the problem that, the problem is that, Oak and 15, the northeast corner, it was the worst house neighborhood, Barnum, I will promise you that. But on the one across the street, what I learned from that one, is if I leave the lawn and, and, and the sidewalk is the same, the dogs can meander, you know, and they get the patches, and I hate that. You know, I spend so much effort on the small piece, make it look perfect. Well, on the other house we have, on, on, on Griffith, I put the two-foot wall, pampas grass, and pushed the fence back. So because I'm up two feet, the dogs can't wander, it still has that wonderful landscaping, pushes it back, creates that privacy. Well, on both of them, on 15 and Griffith, actually, I think it's, it's a sweeter condition than the other. I'm going to, after we finish that one over on Griffith, which we're fairly close, they were putting all the stucco on today. Yeah, I think so. It's gonna kill it, it's got 12 foot deep pool, it's huge in size.
I see all of them coming, going.
Yeah, he lives on Griffith, about half a block up. Nice guy, nice guy, yeah, yeah. Go to Seattle, yeah. He's been keeping, yeah, the grassy spot.
Could be, Commissioner.
Oh, Evan.
One light in the house.
Evan.
Unless he doesn't want it, if they don't want it.
Oh, which means they start the soap.
Yeah, we unfortunately, we know him by first name.
Commissioner Goins also has a chairman, Goins, and a pipe director. But they're leaving.
Well, I wanna go home.
In a half hour, they're gonna lock my car up with Triple George. Fuck you, dude. I did all the stuff up front.
Really?
This is a small engine, actually, it's really small. I think that really is, it's a jet. It's small, and I got a bear's small.
I wanna go back there.
The next one's, they're all small. Deny their advance. You hear their item, we were ready. You can always deny their refund.
Oh, they're starting to get-
I think the rule of thumb legally is give everybody one advance.
Because I'm freezing.
One advance. I don't know, I don't know. Ask your fellow commissioners and attorneys, what do you think? You're better off with one advance than no advance. Well, now they're emailing me inside the, 445, I'm getting it before I got you. I believe the staff was right.
That was just about, start, nothing, you know.
Has been, had already, as far as continually assuming another parcel is not parking. Oh, yeah, he's already built on there, versus slurs. It's all by a fanny circle. Without, without, no, actually, they're propping to the north, it's half, it's half that, that's the one he's, Farlow. Two ponds.
Looked at it. Everything we heard about ponds is true.
In this case, shown ends page one fifty-three in your attachment. We're showing that for approvals for business licenses and SUPs, um, facade improvements, interior remodels, signage, there, the requirement for streetscaping, streetscape and lot landscaping is not required, that undergrounding of the utilities is not required, and that no additional parking is required. In the next category, with regard to modifications to an existing structure resulting in a net floor area expansion not to exceed ten percent or fifty, five thousand square feet, whichever is less, again, streetscape and lot landscaping are not required, utilities are not required to be undergrounded, but a covenant running with the land agreeing to obtain the property owner's consent for future improvements is required, and again, no additional landscaping. For new development, that is a new principal structure on the site, the SDR is required, of course. If the majority of the block frontage, that is over fifty percent, is part of the project, then all improvements are required. If it's only partial block frontage, as you know, we'll have a, a development mid-block, and what we've had in the past is we'll have the brand-new sidewalk and curb and gutter and street trees for a partial of the mid-block, and then it falls off into the, the lack of any improvements. In this case, again, the covenant will be allowed to, to be, uh, entered into for future development when the rest of the block is developed. We believe that these changes, that they've been worked out with the, um, Flynn on, in planning and development, and Dave Bratcher in OBD, they've worked with both, uh, large developers and those with smaller projects, and we believe that the establishment of these thresholds will make the implementation of the downtown centennial plan, um, easier for both staff and for property owners. The additional changes that are proposed is a new district called the downtown gateway district, which is the area up in the northern portion of the, uh, project area, Stewart Avenue at Las Vegas Boulevard, with regard to, um, signage and other requirements. And then, other changes, again, for implementation purposes, such as north-south streets will now be required to have the palm trees with an option of placing shade trees. These are all changes that have come about over the years that we've been implementing the plan, with regard to difficulties that have come up and how we might deal with them. I will note that the boundaries of the downtown centennial plan are not proposed to be changed at this time, and in fact, there have never, there has never been a change to the boundaries of the downtown centennial plan area since two thousand. Um, the idea being that, that that area was established to create the incentives specifically within that area, and up until this time, no, uh, amendments to the total land area have been approved or considered. That's a summary of the cha, oh, and then lastly, there's also pages, uh, one forty-seven through one fifty, show that we have, we're proposing different standards with regard to the sidewalks, particularly in the downtown south northern strip area and the industrial area. We're showing a, a, a less wide sidewalk because of the industrial nature of the, uh, of properties there, whereas the standard condition is for a ten-foot sidewalk with a five-foot amenity zone. So, again, we've fine-tuned the public improvement section of the downtown centennial plan, again, to address the reality of the implementation that we've seen over the years. So, that concludes my report. Um, any questions, I'll certainly attempt to answer them, and then any other further things that you wish for staff to take into consideration, we'll certainly accept those comments at this time.
Thank you very much. Do we need a public hearing on this particular, uh...
Yes.
Item? Okay, I'd like to clear the public hearing open now and ask anyone in attendance who wishes to speak on the matter to approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Wesley Miles Isba, one oh seven East Charleston Boulevard, Las Vegas. Um, I'd first like to say that this is, uh, a magnificent document that, uh, has come over a handful of years of, uh, of work, and the, uh, planning commission and the folks that produce this, uh, have actually heard what the community wants and needs, and I want to applaud that in the strongest, uh, uh, manner. Um, this will help considerably an adaptive reuse of a lot of buildings that have now gotten to an age in our city that have, uh, changed their needs, and our districts have changed their needs, and this will make it possible for smaller projects to happen. It'll make it, uh, financially feasible, and we should be able to see some fantastic change in growth from this exact, uh, uh, process. Um, I would like to add, though, that the, uh, the city in the building process is made up of a, uh, several departments. There is planning, and there is the building department, and the fire department, and land use, and, and I'm sure there are several others, including this, uh, public works, uh, um, in, in, in the environment. And, um, I, I'd like to say that when, when any one of those, um, uh, agencies or, or departments says no to a project, it appears to the developer or to the person that the city says no. So, planning and the commission and so forth can say yes, if fire says no, it's no. It takes all five or six to say yes to make it appear that the city says yes. And while I believe this is a magnificent first step, and this says exactly what we need to do, I can stress in the strongest manner that unless this goes forward and is pressed upon in the planning and the fire and the other departments, that the hard work that has been done by the planning commission, uh, will be in vain. So, while I approve this, I believe it is a vital step to what goes forward, and I, once again, stress that the, uh, that the building department and the fire department look at this as, as a guideline. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Uh, yes, Dick Guyer, eighty-two sixty Hilton Head Court, uh, president eighteen B, Las Vegas Arts District Neighborhood Association. Uh, I've been involved in the downtown, uh, for, uh, the arts district, uh, for approximately ten years. Um, we've had, I think, for six or so years, uh, the task force meetings, which for most of that time have been once a month, they're now once a quarter. This is a very unique, uh, situation, uh, where, uh, property owners in the arts district and city staff and, uh, people from, uh, the mayor's office or the council office all get together in one room and discuss these various issues that have to do with, with, uh, encouraging the growth of the arts district. Um, and, uh, actually, you know, slowly but surely, this has come out of that, uh, that wonderful interchange, and, uh, we are very, very, as, as Mr. Isba said, very, very happy with it. Uh, the reality has been, over the years, that the smaller property owners that have sought to, uh, take over property and redevelop it have faced a nightmare, uh, of, uh, rules and regulations and improvements that were required, uh, that were well above anything that they had, uh, conceived of when they bought the land or bought the, uh, the existing building. Uh, every single person that I know that has tried to go through this process has, has emerged, uh, very angry, uh, and far more frustrated. So, this is great. This is really, as Wes said, this is a wonderful beginning, and, uh, we look forward, uh, to the support of, uh, particularly the planning department, and of course, as was mentioned, uh, Dave Bratcher, uh, Tom Burkhart, and Finn Flag, who we've, Mr. Isba, I have, have met with, uh, in consideration of, of this new proposal. So, we, as I say, we really do look forward, uh, to continuing to really look at the reality of the downtown area, and specifically, of course, the arts district, and what really has to be done, uh, so that it doesn't cause so many increases, uh, in the, the costs that the property owner becomes discouraged and, and, uh, you know, wishes they hadn't bought the, bought the building, and can't really go forward and, and do what they want. Uh, so I think that, uh, over the next year, we'll be back, uh, with other, uh, minor changes here and there, that will, that will be helpful, and, and we will then see some growth downtown, because the reality is that the large builders, of course, never did anything except for Sam Cherry, uh, and the others went away because of the economic situation. But the really sad part is that the smaller businesses, for the most part, have not been able to grow and change very much. So, this is great, and we really thank Margot and all of you and everyone who's involved in this, and we see it as, as, uh, another part of, of really a breakthrough for the arts district. Uh, as I, last I was here, I led off seven things that were great about, you know, what's funded and happening in the arts district. This is, is important, if not more so, than anything that I spoke on before, so thank you very much.
And thank you. Anyone else in attendance wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and, uh, turn the matter over to planning commissioners for their discussion and possible motion. I, uh, would like to simply comment that I'd like to congratulate staff and everyone that worked on it as a, as an input specialist, and, uh, say that I feel that this document is gonna be a, a tremendous guiding document to help us, uh, in our overall redevelopment of downtown. This plays a key element to adding a certain ambiance that it lacks now, and I think that we're gonna be, uh, really proud in a few years when all this comes to fruition. But we all realize that it's a living document, and as changes are gonna be necessary, we'll come forward with them and justify the reasons for the changes, and we'll hopefully make them as necessary. So, thank you, and anyone else wish to speak or make a comment or motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Um, you know, it's amazing to see the things that are happening downtown. You look, you drive along Third Street and see the streetscape going in, casino center, some of the, uh, plans for, for, these changes do help the development community, this, um, and, and, and as, um, Mr. Guyer said, there are probably little things that, that'll come along down the road that, that will still need to be addressed. I need to clarify a couple of things, just 'cause I, it, ship showing up is this, in this rewrite, on the scenic byways, signage requirements, it, it reiterates that signs , uh, fronting Las Vegas Boulevard are, uh, as it reads here, uh, shall be in full comply, uh, conformance with Title Nineteen, which is the scenic byways. Is that new signage, or is there gonna be some retroactive thing that, that businesses may experience?
That's only new signage.
Okay. And, uh, the other things, on the, where you say that there might be shade tree substitutions for palm trees?
Yes.
Is that block to block, or, I mean, are we gonna see, like, Third Street's a pretty attractive street, Fourth Street's an attractive street, we're not gonna be mixing them up and down the block?
The language is that the north-south streets will be required to have palm trees with the option of placing additional shade trees between them.
Okay, additional, that's, that's fine. I mean, I just wanted to clarify that, and it is a, a great thing. Now, the, also, the, the requirement to sign the, uh, what is it, the covenant to future undergrounding?
Yes.
That's an absolute requirement, it's not, I mean, we're not gonna wind up having ninety percent of downtown on board and waived off a couple of things and not be able to do the undergrounding at some future point, or is it a, a standard condition of, of approvals?
It is on everything except for the smallest projects, which are facade improvements and interior remodel and signage. Any, um, thing that results in net floor area expansion, then they're required to have the covenant.
Okay. It's, it, again, staff did a great job, and it's, uh, it's, we'll see this update, and I think it, it will be positive for, uh, recruiting businesses and, and boutique developments in the downtown area that, that aren't gonna go out and assemble five blocks and, you know, wait forever. So, it's a great opportunity. And if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
Motion's been made, please catch a vote. Post? It was close, but it made it.
Thank you, that goes forward to council and ordinance forum, and thank you for your support.
We now move item number forty, which is text amendment thirty-four zero forty-four. The applicant owner is the city of Las Vegas. Is to amend the city of Las Vegas zoning ordinance Title Nineteen to implement recommendations of the transportation and streets and highways element of the Las Vegas twenty-twenty master plan relating to site development plan review submittal requirements.
Thank you. The master plan element of transportation and streets and highways was adopted by the city council in April of this year, following the public hearings of the planning commission and considerable work, especially with the public works department. One of the primary recommendations of that document that has been adopted was to amend Title Nineteen to require the, um, traffic studies to be submitted along with applications for site development plan reviews of a, of a substantial nature. The proposed text amendment is that for any proposed site development plan, which would be expected to generate over one hundred peak-hour vehicle trips, a traffic impact analysis shall be submitted. The estimated peak-hour vehicle trip should be made in accord with the most recent additions of the trip generation, and Trip Generation Handbook is published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers, I T E. This requirement within the code would be enforced at the time of application for site development plan reviews that meet this threshold, and that we would not bring those forward to, to the planning commission if that traffic generation study was not part of the submittal. This has been, of course, a topic of discussion at the planning commission for some time, and so this request, uh, for the text amendment is recommended for approval, uh, by the planning and development and public works departments as a result of the approved transportation and streets and highways element. Any questions, I'll attempt to address them.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public open, public hearing open now. Anyone in attendance wish to speak on the matter, please approach the microphone and give your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn it over to staff for discussion and possible motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Um, well, I know, we did such a great job on the twenty-twenty, uh, thresholds, and I, I understand the, the questions for the traffic study, but this is a pretty, this can be a significant burden on the development community for projects that they have no, I mean, you do a, a, a traffic analysis as part of analyzing a project, but to go into a full traffic study to be submitted before you even know whether staff's got comments on the project, to me seems to create another, um, potential burden for development that could, um, impact us. So, I, I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, and there are, uh, opinions that having a traffic study, uh, is important to look at a project. Uh, I'm one that is not sure that makes all that much, uh, economic sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Through you, I, I, I would agree to some extent, um, perhaps, uh, maybe Ms. Wheeler, you can address this. I would think that maybe the size and scope of some of the applications would trigger, uh, the extent of the study and whether or not that would be required. Um, the things that I've seen built downtown have been minimally, uh, have had a minimal impact, I'm thinking about, um, the Newport, not Newport, uh, Jewel, for example, um, it seems to have restricted a lane, but I don't recall it being that burdensome, um, and I, I recall a few of the others, you, you had a, a temporary, uh, growing pains, but they all seem to have sufficient staging area. Um, but what it does alarm me is when I see multiple streets torn up, and I think it's really more of a public works or perhaps utility undergrounding, uh, simultaneously, never...
We did such a great job on the 2020 thresholds, and I understand the questions for the traffic study, but this is a pretty, this can be a significant burden on the development community for projects that they have no, I mean, you do a traffic analysis as part of analyzing a project, but to go into a full traffic study to be submitted before you even know whether staff's got comments on the project, to me seems to create another potential burden for development that could impact us. So I know we've had a lot of discussion on this, and there are opinions that having a traffic study is important to look at a project. I'm one that is not sure that makes all that much economic sense.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Through you, I would agree to some extent, perhaps, maybe Ms. Wheeler, you can address this. I would think that maybe the size and scope of some of the applications would trigger the extent of the study and whether or not that would be required. The things that I've seen built downtown have been minimally, have had a minimal impact. I'm thinking about the Newport, not Newport, Jewel, for example. It seems to have restricted a lane, but I don't recall it being that burdensome. And I recall a few of the others, you had a temporary growing pains, but they all seem to have sufficient staging area. But what does alarm me is when I see multiple streets torn up, and I think it's really more of a public works or perhaps utility undergrounding simultaneously. Never in my 54 years of living in the southern Nevada area have I seen so many streets torn up simultaneously. I don't think a lot of that is a consequence of development, but I'm really not sure. And it's countywide. But name any street, it's hard to get around. I'm pleased that people are working, but it seems like they're not, I'd like to see them all working on one project at one time and move on. So I think the traffic studies could be an important piece of the puzzle, but I would think that it might depend on the intensity and the scope of the project. So just some thoughts.
If I may, the 100-trip vehicle threshold is typically 150 single-family homes, 220 units of a multifamily project, an office complex of 55,000 square feet, or a retail center over 15,500 square feet.
Isn't, and this in response to what Mr. Trusdale raised, this is the site development plan review, so aren't you pretty well down the road at that point? And on the other hand, I think you often see applications where the site development plan review comes along at the same time as the zoning. So maybe that would separate those, I don't know. But it does seem like when you're at the site development plan review, that certainly would make sense at that point in time.
I think that the provisions as presented do provide a threshold level that certainly appears reasonable under the circumstances.
You know, what sometimes sounds reasonable is impossible to accomplish. I mean, a lot of times, we get site plan requests in here, and they come in with a great layout plan, and we ask them to move something, staff asks them to move something, and, you know, this is going to be the Full Employment Act for traffic engineers. And that's, not that that's right or wrong, I mean, I, I, it just, you want people to come in with creative development, bring it to planning, bring it to the city, and present things, and if they, if it gets far enough along, then it should have the traffic study element come into play. But I'm almost positive that nobody just submits a site developed plan without looking at their own traffic circulation. How do I get into it? How am I going to access it? Is it going to be efficient within the traffic? But to reduce that to a, getting that plan done, then having detailed traffic study done before you can make application, I suspect we add 60, 90 days to the average development cycle. And we're, even though we're submitting it and the clients, the developers paying for it, it's going to be a big burden on staff time to review those in detail. Now, unless we're hearing that staff's going to do, you know, I read the summary sheet and hand it back, because we like the traffic engineer, that's, that wouldn't be appropriate. Because I think if somebody's spending the time and money to create those studies, they're expecting them to be reviewed in earnest on the other side. So it, there are, there are large projects that have additional traffic analysis, and those people stand before us, and they bring traffic engineers with them, and they're prepared to answer questions. But a detailed traffic study submitted at the time of application on a 15,000-square-foot retail center, for instance, I don't know if that, if that is encouraging development within the city.
I, I agree with what you're saying. I would appreciate some suggestions or further discussions that would perhaps describe a more appropriate place within the developer process where a study would be required, the depth, the detailedness of that particular study. There's got to be a point where we can reach a happy medium, where we just proceed down a process without really giving the traffic a reasonable amount of study. It protects both the city and the neighboring properties, but as well as the applicant to make sure that they aren't spending a lot of money on things that aren't going to work out for them, because if they would have known upfront, this wasn't going to work. There's some happy medium place where I think we could provide some directions to staff to codify for us. Wide open to discussions from any avenue.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Well, one of the things, as you're mentioning that, and I wonder if there's some way to break this down into different areas. For example, I mean, a residential 150 units is going to be a new subdivision somewhere, and so that's kind of a different project. I mean, you know there's going to be traffic there versus, say, you know, an infill retail center someplace. And I guess just the thought occurs to me that it might be, it might make more sense rather than just saying, we're just going to look at everything, whether it's 100 trips or not, that we look at distinguishing, creating some different categories.
If it was the wish of this commission, we could certainly come back to you with some different options, if that's the wish of the commission.
I think there, there's possibly a way to get, to maybe have a little more input with regards to prior to that improvement. A traffic study can, and the traffic engineer can attest to this, can be, one traffic engineer, if he submits a study for a project, he may, he may study two intersections, because that's what he thought was the impact. Staff may say, you know, we think the impact may be greater after they've gone through the project and looked at it in detail, and they go, we think that study should include four intersections. You could have just wasted all of that dollar, most all of that money, and asked that applicant to prepare a brand-new study. And...
Well, that would be discussed at the pre-op, when they first come in and they meet with staff before they prepare their documents. That's how many weeks before submittal? Four weeks?
Yeah, approximately six weeks, actually.
It just, we want to encourage good development within the city, and I, I'm just uncertain that a blanket code gets us, gets the required result that is proposed by this change.
Perhaps we should take up Ms. Wheeler and have her come up with some other possibilities.
Yeah, and I would hope that we could talk with maybe some of the professional associations or some of the organizations that exist in town, be it the NIOP or some of these other groups that are involved in these types of projects, and come up with a process that we can be happy with, that gives us the protections that we need, also doesn't create unnecessary time delays or additional expenses to the proponents for a particular project, because we, we do want to encourage development, we want it to be the kind of development that makes it a better community. And so perhaps if we accept the director's suggestion and let staff go back and perhaps come up with some options with some pluses and minuses, and I'm sure we're not going to be able to find the exact sweet spot in the process, but we could have some options and have some discussion and come up with something that works just a little better and addresses some of the concerns we've talked about tonight.
In that case, I would recommend tabling it to allow us the time to do all of those things.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table this for staff's recommendation.
Make a motion to me. Please catch your vote. Post? Motion to table, it's been accepted. We now move to item, my favorite, item number 42, citizens' participation. Nope, we got one more?
Yep.
Forty-one, okay. It's a text amendment 34092. The applicant owners, the city of Las Vegas, is to amend Title 19.04, Table 2, to revise the regulations and applicable zoning districts for the boat and trailer dealership, new and used car use. Staff report, please.
The current code with regard to boat and trailer dealership, new and used, is to allow such uses within the C2, CM, and M zones. Within the C2 zone, it requires an S U P. Within the CM and M zones, it is allowed with conditionals, as a conditional use. The request has been to consider this as an S U P use within the C1 zoning district also. The use is allowing the display within the building or on the lot for new or used boats, jet skis, or other marine vessels. This proposal before you this evening would require that the storage and the sales be conducted within an enclosed structure in C1. So there is a differentiation between C1 and C2. However, the question before the commission, of course, would be whether or not you felt this was an appropriate use within the C1 zone, even with those, even with that more restrictive condition than in C2. In this case, DAFT does not have a recommendation, but bring forward the item for you for your consideration and recommendation.
Thank you. I'd like to declare the public hearing open. Anyone in attendance wish to speak? Please approach the microphone and give your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll declare the public hearing closed and turn the matter over to planning commissioners for discussion and possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I have some, some concerns about this. I do see some value in the text amendment, in that the requirement for the C1 zoning being an enclosed space, but I'm thinking basically what that might translate to is simply big warehouse, you know, shed-looking. I can't imagine someone putting a tremendous amount of money to build a facility to showcase used trailers and used boats, let alone new. As I understand it, the current zoning allows new and used boat and trailer sales in our commercial industrial zoning designations, but does not allow it in the C1, the regular commercial for retail and et cetera. And I'm a little concerned that the adoption of this text amendment may create some unintended consequences. And I think in terms of my, I think it's going on eight years up here, all the various battles we've had with car dealerships, and I'm thinking that are we opening a Pandora's box, essentially allowing used and new boat and trailer sales in, in our C1 districts, which I thought were anticipated for more retail-oriented kinds of businesses? And I do note that it's not consistent with our general plan or our zoning goals, and I know that, having served on the 2020 master plan, I think with Mr. Buckley, probably eight, nine, 10 years ago, it is not consistent with the goals and objectives of the 2020 master plan. So even though I think there's an additional protection requiring a facility, I think the unintended consequence of this might be that it would take a ward like mine, which is more mature, Ward 3, and create nuisances that don't currently exist. We'd like to see good retail come into areas, and I don't think that necessarily warehousing boats and used trailers would be a good application or a good conversion in that, in that zoning district. It's, it's something that I have some, some concerns about. And unlike in some of the newer areas, which I think are primarily master plan communities, this wouldn't affect Summerlin. You know, they have more restrictive, I think, I don't think it would be allowed because of, by master plan. But it will affect my ward, and I, and I think there are some consequences that we really need to look at before we adopt something like this. And I'd be curious of whether my other commissioners have similar concerns.
Mr. Chairman. One thing, and one thing that kind of struck my eye when I looked at this was to see the word jet skis, and made me think of, you know, smaller, smaller boats, like, you know, little fishing boats and things like that. And so, you know, something like the Bass Outfitters or whatever that might be. So it might, might be worthwhile to distinguish based on the size of the, of the boat, and not, and probably not thinking of trailers, but, but I don't know. But the other thing that comes to mind is right where that SuperPond was now, which is a Harley-Davidson, which is an old big-box retailer, which is a motorcycle dealership all inside. And so it can be done nicely. I mean, you can't do big boats in there, and I can't, I don't, I wouldn't think storage, and I think that's what you might be thinking of, is storage. But I mean, if you're selling, you know, small fishing boats or things like that, I think would work in a C1.
I'm thinking more in terms of travel trailers, that sort of thing, which I never thought of the big-box, closed big-box store, the Homebase or something like that. That might be conceivable.
I think of, I think the place that comes to mind of this is something out on Boulder Highway, you know, these big boat storage places.
Well, I'm thinking of Johnny Walker Sales and all the places along Boulder Highway in the county, which have been there for a very long time. What I'm concerned about is areas of my ward that is ripe for redevelopment, and we'd like to see good retail come in, may end up, you know, as basic warehouses for used trailers.
Maybe the size.
When I say warehousing, I mean a big structure, because the requirement is that it be housed within the structure. And I can't imagine most structures being real aesthetically pleasing that would be large enough to accommodate that.
See, I think we all had a different vision when we read the document. My thought was, like I've seen in other parts of the country, where you would have indoor retail sales that would have the smaller boats, tent trailers, perhaps they switch out the small boats seasonally, where during the summer, they're selling fishing boats and things along those lines, but then during the winter, they sell snowmobiles and things along those lines, just their seasonal products, and any storage that would go on at that facility is because of the cost per square foot. Any storage that would go in there would just be directly ready to retail sales. It wouldn't be to house inventory. And so I was thinking of something more along like what's out on Blue Diamond at Silverton. That's what I envisioned, but, you know, of course, there's, that's the beauty in the, everybody reads it differently.
If everybody, if everybody was going to get a Bass Pro Shop, I don't think we'd have a real hard time dealing with this. But what I'm afraid we will have is a closed Albertsons that has a kind of a 30-some-year-old architecture fault, you know, in disrepair, suddenly comes in for a use permit, and it sounds like a good use to fill this big, this 50,000-square-foot box, and suddenly we've got repair going on inside, and we've got 80, 90 boats outside in travel trailers all, and then banners come up, then this comes up, and we got, we got car, we got used car dealerships in C1 zoning with, and that's the unintended consequence of this. And it's a difficult question, because there is a lot of distressed C1 real estate in this valley, and we could have a myriad of these, and then, well, I got this next door, so why not let me have a used car? And it becomes a snowball, and there's no good solution here. There really isn't. But when I read this at first, I thought, I'm like, hey, this is, somebody wants to do a high-end Silverton-type deal, and that's great, but that's probably not what we will see come through. And these will be existing projects that meet their landscaping, and it's, I'm going to think twice about this.
Are the, are the C, are the big-box places, are those C2 zoning or are those C1?
Most of the neighboring shopping centers are C1. If they don't have a tire and brake store or something with them, and... store or something with them, and, and this will have repair, I mean, at least the way this is written, it'll have repair, so is that major repair now in C1?
See, and I, I guess my thought is that if I wanted to buy a boat, and I wanted to buy a trailer, there's a lot of places I could go to do that. It's primarily an industrial area. By allowing it in the C1 zone, I, I, I agree. I, I think as provocative as it may be, and for the few people that may benefit from it, the devil's in the details, and I, I just don't want to go down the road with used cars where, particularly in, in wards like mine and Byron yours, and to some extent yours, Ms. Quinn, you, those are the, those are the wards that I think you'll see these, and, and I would envision that, that the closed big, big box is going to be full of, of motor coaches. And I just think, if I want to go buy, you know, an Airstream or whatever they are, I, there are places I can go to do that. I don't want it to be necessarily around the corner from me and what I would hope one day would be good retail.
I just want to say for the record that I agree that my ward is ripe for this. I have a, we have a closed Mervyn's, we have a closed Vons', and I would hate to see either one of those corners turn into something like this. And so I would not be able to support this until it was more condensed to a certain area versus such a broad scope. And I agree with all my commissioners, I think we're all thinking on the same page on this one.
Okay, we want to have a motion on this one, and what do we want to do? Any thoughts? Want to restrict it to certain areas, or?
Mr. Chairman, I, it seems to me that, I, I don't understand that there was a great big movement to do this, but it was just a suggestion, and I guess so I'll, I'll move to deny this proposed amendment.
Good. Most has been made, please cast your votes.
And that will go forward to council and ordinance forum with the, the Planning Commission comments and concerns as we do in council staff reports. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, just for the record, I think, I understood this just to be referring to boat trailers, not to any other kind of trailers. They were related to marine vessels.
Fine. Okay. We now move item number 42, which is citizens' participation. Public comment during the portion of this agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speaker is allowed, may be limited.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I'd like to go back to items 22, 23, 24, and 25, some of the comments Commissioner Goins made on that. Commissioner Goins, you're absolutely right, this not-in-my-backyard thing. We have been discussing this for 15 years, that I know of. It's the dog chasing the tail. The rescue mission are, are the people that want to hope and say, we go there because that's where the people are. And then the homeless say, that's where we go there because that's where the services are. And you get the same thing. But your ward gets not only the city, but you have to remember, it gets the entire county. It gets the county, it gets Henderson, it gets north of Las Vegas, it gets Boulder City, gets everybody in your, in that one area. And I really believe, I've said this long ago, somewhere, we have to, to divide this up. My ward's got to take some of them, everybody's ward, it's, or else, like the mayor one, do it one time, you know, you have some place, I don't know, where, clear out of town or something. And that doesn't do any good either, because there's no services out there. But this has to be addressed at some point, and I think by this fall, when this economy really tanks, I think it's really going to become an issue serious. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak? Okay, I, supposed to filibuster here for about one minute.
Really?
You know how expensive Dead Air is on TV? Somebody ought to...
We can talk about the parade this week.
We can talk about the Hildorado parade that's occurring this week. The Planning Commission's going to be in attendance, and we will be riding in a couple of classic vehicles, probably not those that were going to be worked on by the gentleman that had his request denied. But this is Commissioner Quinn's birthday, and that's what we were filibustering for. We've now got the bouquet that's out, and I believe that Mr. Goins is going to lead us all in happy birthday, or perhaps he's going to do it a cappella.
Mr. Chairman.
Girl from the choir here.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I...
I just want to say for the record...
Please approach the microphone and help us out, we need all the help we can get.
Come on, young lady, it's, it's your 15 seconds of fame.
It's on TV.
We'll give you a proper introduction.
She's from K O Newton Elementary School, and she's in the choir, and, and she should, she's missing the talent contest, so this is it.
Please, come on, it's my 50th.
Well, here, well, here we...
Come on, all of you.
Come on, ladies.
Come on, girlies.
Come on up.
This could be your big chance.
See, there you go.
You never know. Come on, they want to go home.
Look, if I join in, no one will hear you anyway.
This is Shane. This is the boy.
Shane, lead us off with a happy birthday.
Let's go, Shane.
We'll start.
Go, baby.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to Mr. Quinn. Happy birthday to you. And many more.
We wish you very, many more. We wish you many more happy birthdays.
I wanted to say, Mr. Farlow, for the record, this was not paid by tax dollars.
Okay, I think at this point, we'll adjourn the meeting, and thank you for listening.
For the record.
Happy birthday.